Call our special budget meeting to order. We would thank everyone who are joining us remotely, as well as those who are here. At this time, we'll begin with the invocation. If we could have, I guess, Councilmember Wright. You want to pray? Okay, Councilmember Wright, if you could, give us a prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we come to you today thanking you for your goodness, your guidance and wisdom. As we go through the budget items tonight, God, direct us. Help us to make wise choices with the people's money. God, that these finances and monies could impact the betterment of our city and our residents. Bless our leadership and be with us, and we thank you for it, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Counsel, if we can stand, and everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Council item 4.0 is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion to, all right? A motion by Councilmember Harris, her second, by Councilmember Jones.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Need discussion? Councilmember Davis?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may put this before council. On last week, we had a meeting, and I was out of the loop in terms of technology-wise at Fort Worth, Missouri. In that meeting, I had two items that were, um, that were Councilmember requests, but there were topics that are related to budget. And I was hoping if it might be the appetite of the council to at least ask them to hear what those items were as a part of the agenda, if this is the appropriate place to make that request. And I understand that would take a supermajority, I believe.
It will. And Councilmember Davis, you said, since this is a budget meeting, as it relates to budget, and these were items that, because tonight we're discussing parking lot items and unfunded initiatives and the geo bond, which, what type of items were?
Um, one, of course, was, um, an opportunity to, um, to invest into the Reed Ross area where Parks and Recs is in terms of turfing that, that field and doing upgrades to that, to that track to make it NCAA level, um, field, uh, facility for nominal amount. Something that previous councilmen, Mr. Arp and other ones, have talked about. And the other was, I think, an event that was more focused towards collaborations, of course, in alignment with the city strategic goals, but collaborations with agencies. So that might not be a parking lot event because it doesn't pertain to any budgetary implications, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. So, uh, council has a motion on the, on the floor to consider a budgetary item referenced to, uh, facility upgraded Reed Ross. I think the other one, as he mentioned, I do recall, is probably not appropriate for this, this meeting. So that would take a supermajority. Councilmember here.
Yes, sir. That first item that, um, Councilmember Davis mentioned, since it fell up under the Councilmember request, which is something that normally goes back to staff for them to bring it to us, is that what you're asking to happen or to have the full discussion on it? Because they wouldn't give us the budget, the proposed budget for that tonight.
So typically, I think what Councilmember Harris is saying is that if there was a consensus to look at it, then, uh, it would normally come back with, uh, the budgetary attachment. So tonight, since we are trying to specifically work through and toward adoption of a budget, don't know if we would have the numbers to plug in for the initiative. So, uh, what I would probably suggest, Councilmember Davis, maybe if, um, if there's a consensus, maybe we could take the temperature of the council to see if that's something to invest staff in. You know, normally it would have taken five minutes if you had been here. Uh, we'll allocate that amount of time for that if council is amenable to it, and then we'll, then we'll get to the rest of it. Okay. All right. So will you, we'll amend your motion to, um, so what we'll need to do is amend it to add that item, uh, as maybe 5.0, uh, one, to, to that. And it's just basically a consensus to get more information.
Bring it back towards council.
Yeah.
Move on that item.
All right. And so the approval of the budget, uh, the motion to approve that's been amended, uh, do you, do you agree with that on the second? Councilmember Jones? All right. So it's amended and seconded, uh, to include item 4, 5.01, just for consensus, temperature check, uh, to engage staff for specifics. Uh, any questions, other discussions, council? All right, those in favor of, of that? Show of hands. All right. Adam Craig, that's, and Mr. Manager, you've got what you need to provide that at a later time, right?
What?
A unanimous consensus nod to investigate the, uh, cost of the track upgrade.
I thought y'all were gonna have a conversation then.
No, it was just, it was just consensus. Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. All right, item 5.1, geo bond projects. Mr. Tolan?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, we wanted to give you a kind of a more specific and in-depth overview of, um, the geo bonds, the upcoming referendum. We want to talk about possible dates that we can issue the debt and then get into specific projects. So as you recall, um, there was a, about measure approved by council for the November 8th election for a referendum up to 97 million and 60 million for public safety, 25 million for streets and sidewalks, and 12 million for affordable housing. And so as we look at this, as a, as a, as you all know, the referendum will be in November of this year, so a tax increase wouldn't happen until, not next year, but fiscal year end '24. And so we're looking probably closer to the four cents, but it'd be somewhere between three and a half cents and four cents. Now, looking at some possible, um, tranches, and why, why this is important is because this can, this shows when we'd start actually working on the projects. So if the city were to receive, and this is assuming all three questions pass, so we'll have three, four, for or against questions, one for public safety, one for streets and sidewalks, and another one for, uh, housing. So assuming that all three of those pass, we could issue the debt in these two different scenarios. Um, one would be more of kind of a measured approach where you divide the number by three, do an issuance in '23, '25, and '28. Or we could really front-load it and do 65 million in fiscal year end '23, which means accelerates a lot of projects to the front, and then you see the two smaller tranches, um, at the end. There's no need to make a decision on this. This is just kind of a FYI, um, just so that you all can kind of get a feeling of how we could approach this.
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tolan, and council, when we, we'll take these two questions, then if we could hold questions to the end of the presentation. Was that the end of your presentation?
No, sir.
All right. So go to Councilmember Wright and then here, and then we'll try to hold.
Uh, my question is in the scenario two, uh, to front-load 65 million, uh, in '23. Uh, my question would be, in, in that scenario, the, the jobs that would, uh, that would be undertaken with 65 million, would we have, um, the manpower, the time to do that? Would that overburden us or with what we have going on already? Or is that something that we've thought about and that we could handle? Uh, because it's a lot of money, and it would cover a lot of jobs. But, you know, the projects, would we, would be able to do that? Or would that kind of put us behind the power curve in the timeframe in which we want to accomplish them?
I think it, you bring up a great point. I think it would be a heavy lift knowing that we have senior center east, the tennis center, homeless day center, you know, other, you know, we're here about the CIP later this evening. A lot of projects coming up in the very near future. So I think, you know, capacity will definitely be an issue. We just wanted to be kind of transparent and show, okay, we can do these one of two ways. But I think if you were to ask staff, staff would recommend scenario one.
Yeah, thank you.
But there's no decision needs to be made tonight. This is just kind of a, just for information.
Throw it out, what response would be? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember here?
As far as you speaking of there having to be, uh, there's no need for a decision tonight, um, I'm also want to make it clearly understood that this is if the citizens approve it.
That's correct.
So my, my question is, as you go further tonight, are you gonna even say anything about how it looks as for the networking or marketing for people to be aware of what's taking place? And, 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 uh, that they're gonna, other ones that have to vote on it, even though we're having the discussion? Uh, when do we ever talk about that? Is that in this or another date?
No, mine, I'll be honest with you, mine is really finance-related. It's not really any marketing to it. It's all about things like this, when we'd issue the debt, the projects, the costs, things like that. We can bring that back to you, no problem, but just for full transparency, again, I, I don't really have anything about marketing.
Because there's not a lot of months between now and November, if that's when it's gonna be.
Right.
And, uh, citizens need to know what's going on, because we've had this discussion. So this is not a new discussion. We had this discussion, and I think they need, because I don't want us to, it to appear that we're saying this is okay and we're moving forward, and they're the ones that make that decision.
Absolutely.
And they need to, yeah. So that's my concern that we...
So, Mr. Manager, can you clarify that? In the event that, I guess, Councilmember Harris is asking about the education campaign, when would that begin if, if things go as scheduled?
We've, we've already started. We are looking to try to engage, um, some groups to help us with the portion of the education that we can't do, which might be the advocacy. Um, we've had, um, a couple of internal staff meetings on that, but the plan is to unveil a full proposal to the council and the public about what that looks like between now and, um, I think it's November 8th. Uh, November 8th, I think it is, but the election date would be. Um, the council gave authority for us to move forward this about four weeks ago, five weeks? And we've been busy, um, as a staff, um, looking at what was successful in the last bond referendum so far as data, how, um, surveys, um, and trying to figure out how we proceed in the limited time, as you mentioned. Everything that we have so far, um, we still believe that it's quite doable from everyone we've talked to, but as you indicate, we do need to get started in a very structured way.
That's important. We, we are, what are we pushing, a 240? Oh, it's my Mac, okay. We, we are pushing a, what is it, FY23, what is it, 248 mil? What, what's the, our proposed budget? And we're, we're saying no, uh, tax increases, no fee increases. And we know what this, though, it may be a small amount, but still, and so that's something I think that's very important, that the citizen be aware of this, what this proposal is, regardless of what the amount is.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember here.
I think it's a good point. I'll talk about this at the end, too, but our next official action is June 27th. And currently, we can go down, or we could eliminate one of the questions, but once the action's taken on the 27th, I'm sorry, it'll be locked and loaded all the way through the election. So just, and I'll touch on that again at the end.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we're gonna start with public safety. And so what you have, um, in front of you is the last, um, study that we did for public safety, it identified, and then this, these numbers are, are updated to, to today's numbers or even a little bit into the future with the contingency. So we have $182 million worth of needs in public safety. And then, as you can see, the highlighted and underlined would be the, the initial projects that staff would propose to take under the 60 million. So you have Fire Station 16, which is at Cedar Creek Road. You have Fire Station 9, which is on Santa Fe Drive. And then you have Fire Station 2, which is on, uh, Olive Street. Then for the Police Department, you have a new construction of a new 911 center. And, and you can see the totals there. And then that's a little bit over, that's about $61 million. And of course, we would need to come in under 60 million, and we would value engineer those projects as we look to take final construction. Um, so that is what staff recommends for the public safety projects if the voters approve. Next, you look at the, uh, we call it infrastructure, but on the ballot it'll say streets and sidewalks. Um, so then, as you all remember, you have $7.3 million in sidewalks. And so that's 20 to 25 projects throughout the city, ranging from 400 to, uh, 14,000 linear feet at a cost of, um, so it's 70, it's about 76,000 total linear feet at a cost of about $95 a linear foot, and that's how we get to the $7.3 million. And so we do have a list of what projects were to happen if this were to go live today. But as you all know, the list is gonna be fluid. We have state grants coming in, we have different things, but we have a longer list that we can backfill projects if other projects come off of this list before we start. Next, you'll see intersection improvements, five total intersections, 800,000. Four areas for buffered bike lanes, 450,000. And then 14.7 million, uh, for street repaving and pavement preservation. So it's 63 or 109 miles, depending on the method. And then a little bit, um, 1.75 million for management cost on the streets and sidewalks portion. And so that's a total of $25 million. On the housing, we're still developing the strategy. Um, as we talked about, I believe, as the last council meeting, there's a lot of money available from ARPA, um, and the different federal areas, mainly looking at, uh, you know, housing trust fund, things of that nature. And so as we get, as we get closer, we'll have that ironed out, but most likely it'll be into some type of housing trust fund to help kind of spur the economic, um, construction of affordable housing. And that's it. So as I said, the next action would be June 27th. We would set, it would say, um, basically, you know, public safety, 60 million, streets and sidewalks, 25 million, housing, 12 million, and a resolution that you all would adopt, and it would continue the process. We have to apply to the state through the LGC, work with the Board of Elections, and work with bond council to get all the processes finalized. And then we'd have a, later on, we'd have a public hearing, and there'd be other kind of touchpoints. But once we have that action on the 27th, that it'll be, that'll, that'll, that'll be the amount in the questions.
All right. So, yes, sir, I did have a question for you. Can you go back to the screen? It showed approximate amount of tax, uh, increase.
Yes.
All right. So just for the public, uh, the, the option that was chosen, uh, equates to about 3.5, is that right?
Well, it's between 3.5 and, and four, because we're at 97. So 3, 3.5 is 88 million, the four is 101. And like I said, when we get closer to the, because we're not raising taxes this year, this'll be next year.
If citizens approve.
Exactly. And then we'll, we'll hone it in to the precise amount that we need.
So 3.5 cents added to, uh, let's say, average $100,000, $200,000 house, uh, is roughly, what, $60?
No, I think it's $30, right?
$30 a year?
Yeah.
So you mean, you...
Is that right?
You get all of those sidewalks, those miles of sidewalks, bike paths, streets paved, miles and miles of streets paved, and police and fire stations, uh, for $30 a year?
On $100,000. She's checking my math.
35 for $100,000.
It'd be 70, yeah. And so, yeah, that's additional onto the 49 and a half, 49.99.
The citizens need to also understand that. You know, we get a lot of, we get a lot of comments about, you know, we don't have enough sidewalks in our neighborhood, you know, our streets hadn't been paved, um, you know, so on and so forth. Housing bond, you said, uh, for to address the workforce housing issue? Okay. Just want to make sure I was clear on it.
Yes, sir.
All right. So Councilmember Wright and here?
Yeah. Can you go back to the frame where you were dealing with the districts, uh, it's at Cross Creek? Uh, yes, right here, the Police Department and the new 911 center. And you have from one to six, and then there, the districts, the Cross Creek District, and you have new constructions. What, what are you actually saying here? Uh, all of these will be under the 911 center, or all of them are individual new constructions?
Right, so these are, these are, I'm sorry if I cut you off, sir.
Go ahead.
These are all new construction, right? So these are six items that the, the department and a study has identified as the Police Department needs. So each one of them is its own entity. So the first one is a 911 center, and so that would be the only one at the current model, looking at the top three fire stations, and then the, then the 911 center. That's all the city, excuse me, could afford for the 60 million. And then each one under that is its own entity. So training complex, 23 million, special vehicle storage, 3.8 million, Cross Creek District, a new construction of a, of a substation out there for 11.
Now, when you say Cross Creek, because I have Cross Creek 28, Cross Creek 29, but I guess it's a different type of scenario when it comes to voting polls and, and precincts. So where, where is Cross Creek, um, District, where would that be located? Do you have that information?
Yeah, I'm sure somebody can help me out. Is there anybody?
[inaudible]. Police Department, that's the one off of Rayford Road.
Western Park.
The western part of Rayford Road, okay. Right. So what are you gonna do if it's new construction, it's an already existing building? Are they gonna tear that down and...
So the, so the idea is actually to locate a better location that can accommodate more public, more out west?
That's my question.
Yes.
What, where's the location?
We haven't identified.
They have not chose the location, okay.
So, but trying to get more to the west of the city.
Got you.
Of that community.
Okay, okay. Um, and so when you talked about the management, I think the next frame, uh, sidewalks, what was the amount that you quoted for managing the, the job?
At the bottom, it's, uh, 7% of the total amount.
Which comes up to 25 million?
The, the 25 million is all the projects. The management amount is 1.75 million.
And that, you know, so that's my question, um, and that's in the four-year timeframe to manage the projects of sidewalks?
Yeah, to implement all 25 million, we would need 1.75 to manage that influx of projects.
How do you come up with that number?
Um, I believe it's industry standard, I would ask. Sheila, industry standard for the management fee on the projects? So it's a, it's an industry average, looking at all these projects, what we would need?
It's a, it's an equation that the industry used to come up with, um, that bottom line is taxes.
Right, it's kind of just like we were talking about earlier. You know, it, all, this is a lot of money.
Right.
You know, so we would need more capacity to implement it. And so that's, and then the industry standard is 7%.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
Mayor, um, if I could, um, just want to clarify something to you. I don't want to, uh, Jay, could you go back to the slide that showed, uh, Cross Creek that we were just looking at? Um, could you make a distinction between the projects which are bold and the projects which are not in bold?
Well, the projects that are in bold and underlined, they come out, the total of those four projects is a little over $61 million. And so as you all know, we're doing 60 million. And so the total needs for public safety is 182 million. So we're only able to tackle a third of those projects. And the projects that staff would propose by priority are the ones that are underlined and bolded.
All right. Councilmember here?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jay, help me understand, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. If the citizens approve this, and if the citizens, and it's at the four cents, if it's at the four cents, and we, we are at, um, 49.9, something like that, per 100.
45.99.
So that will, if, if it's adding that 4%, that's going to like 50 point, 50.35? And so that, that's where the rate would be if the citizens approve this?
Correct.
For the tax, for the tax rate then in the city, and, but from where we are now, of the 49.95.
So if it passed in November, right, and let's say it was four cents, then it'd be 53.95, and it would be for fiscal year '23, '24. So that would go into effect, um, basically July 1 of 2023.
Until it's paid, that, does it shift back? Or does it just stay at the 50 point, uh, 35?
It would stay, you all would have the choice at the end, or whoever the council members are would have the choice. Yeah, so this would be 20-year debt, you know, so we can go back to...
Right, 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 I got you.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I understand. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jay.
All right, Jay says we wrap this up from a time perspective, and Doug tipped out at the wrong time. Um, when, uh, before you started your kind of education campaign, it has to be an explanation of what projects you're proposing the citizens to consider. What meeting does that take place? Because you all may have some things on here, and the council may have a different list of priorities. Maybe some shifts in, from fire stations to police precincts, or something like that.
I think as long as, as long as we're not...
And I know it's fluid, I know it's fluid.
Yeah, as long as we're not messing with a dollar amount, because you're not adopting, you're just adopting the type, public safety, housing, and streets and sidewalks. So I think all this would need to come back for a final action as we got prepared to issue the debt, as we did the budget that next year. So you bring up a good point about, oh, okay, are we gonna communicate to the citizens the specific projects? Then we would need to do that before we did the marketing campaign, right? So we could all be on the same page.
So with the Parks and Rec, with the Parks and Rec, we said you're doing a river park, you're doing senior centers, you're doing splash pads, and so on and so forth. So Doug, the question was, before the education campaign, when do we zero in on which projects we're actually proposing? I know it may change with future councils, but...
Um, definitely before we start the marketing campaign. Um, one of the things that, um, this, this slide actually shows are the needs as prioritized, um, by the departments. So this isn't just, um, a sprinkling, this is what the departments have identified. Um, again, it was some time ago and so, but I think we've asked the departments if their priorities actually changed. Um, and so, um, we would want to nail that down, but what the council could say, for instance, is, if we look at, um, police priority, Police Department priority number four, which is, um, new construction or one for Central District or renovation of headquarters, um, any of those projects alone could consume two fire stations. And so it really does come down to, um, we have $182 million in needs and growing that we've identified as part of our, um, public safety needs analysis that was conducted, I think, three years ago. Um, but the time specifically, Mayor, to identify the projects which council wants to put forward would be probably at, on the 27th.
What date?
At your next action, you'll be asked to take on the 27th. When you can actually go down on the amount, um, but that would also be a time for you to confirm that. So something as simple as, we would like to do the 911 station, uh, two fire stations, or three, but we also would like to take care of one of the, uh, Cross Creek or Central District or renovations or something there. And then what we would have to come back and say, okay, if the bond passes, we may have a gap that we need some assistance from on the 911 center. And it's our hope that we actually will... And it's our hope that we actually will be able to apply for state grants to help us offset those costs. And that, of course, will put more money back into the projects that weren't funded. And hopefully we'll be lucky enough to get some bond premium again, as we did on the Parks and Rec bond, so. But, um, as Jay showed you, just the projects that we've identified, the four, um, total sixty-one million, and the total bond is projected at sixty. And, um, construction prices continue to go up. But the answer to what I would help council give would be on the twenty-seventh, that you would give us that direction as to if this list looks right, or if you wanted us to swap around some things.
And, and council, what we did before with the Parks and Rec process was we had a meeting that, that kind of worked through the details of it. Because at the end of that, there needs to be clarity as to what you're proposing to the citizens, whether it's east-west police stations or so many fire stations, so. All right, so we know the twenty-seventh, so that doesn't give us a lot of time. So maybe we'll, we'll talk about some possibilities of maybe a special work session to kind of work through that. So that on the twenty-seventh, you're looking for adoption, formal action, right? The last council meeting of the month?
Well, um, only if you guys are, um, if there's some consensus that you want to do something different. And what I can do as well is, um, we can work, um, offline and can talk to each of you so that you understand the need behind the projects. And then between now and the twenty-seventh, or when you decide to, may need to call a special meeting. Um, but, um, we don't have enough money is what this is really showing.
Well, you never have enough money, so we gotta use what we get wisely, so. All right, uh, Mr. Tolan, you have anything? Any council, any other questions for Mr. Tolan? All right, sir, thank you. All right, item five point two, unfunded initiatives, Ms. Olivera. Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so this slide, um, I would like to just put a little bit of context around items that are on the horizon that meet council's vision for our city of being an attractive, culturally diverse, and inclusive city that is safe, prosperous, innovated, innovative, and unified. But these are needs that are not addressed in the FY twenty-twenty-three budget or CIP and TIP. We still have the second half of the pay study recommendations that we have not funded yet. We have numerous items on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we don't have funding for. The pedestrian and bicycle master plans, the items that are on there that are not requested or would not be requested in GO bonds are currently unfunded. We still have housing strat, study strategies that were presented to you guys on Monday that are not funded. We don't have a permanent facility for our fleet operations. The Black Voices Museum funding is approved, but it hasn't been appropriated yet. Also, our city spirit findings and the repurposing of the market house. We don't have any funding set aside for those initiatives. And then something as small, seemingly small, as Christmas decorations for the downtown area. So as we move through the parking lot, if you would just kind of keep those things in mind, and, and on the broad horizon, the long list of things that you guys have indicated meet the vision already, but we don't have funded. So if you guys would indulge me, I'd like to go through the parking lot slides. And, um, I'm happy to entertain questions that you have. And then at the end of all of the slides, if we can turn our attention to the whiteboard, and we'll do a consensus vote on each item that you guys put on the parking lot. That will give me clear direction of how to proceed with the budget ordinance appropriation.
So just for clarity, are you doing five point two and five point three together?
Yes, sir.
You said no?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Okay, so on our parking lot, um, the first item that you guys added was the increase in seasonal part-time employees to bring that wage up to fifteen dollars per hour. As we discussed previously, that would be an approximate impact of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year. And that is recurring. Um, additionally, we had, um, the, a multi-purpose indoor sports facility was added to the parking lot. And right now, staff is recommending that we pursue a community partnering for use of an existing facility. Um, as, I think there is one somewhere within our county, um, that would meet those needs. And Parks and Rec has indicated they would like to pursue a partnering agreement with that facility. We also had a walking trail at Lake Rim, the resurfacing of that added. Um, based on feedback from Parks and Rec staff, that looks like it's gonna come in at an additional for thirty-five thousand dollars. There was also a request about outdoor basketball courts. And as you can see from this slide, we currently have twelve outdoor basketball courts. And the map, I don't know if you guys can see it well enough, shows how they're dispersed throughout the city. Um, of those twelve, three of them, um, are up for improvements during the coming fiscal year. Go back, yes, sir? So, um, improvements have been made at all locations except three, which are slated for the coming year. And those three are Mabel C. Smith, Montclair, and JS Five-E School Park. And the improvements that have already been done, they've put up upgraded backboards, new basketball rims, and installed a water fountain where they were not already in place. Um, other improvements that have been done at Fire Station One and at Westover, we had facility lighting installed. And coming next year, the marking of the court at Montclair will take place. We also had a question about adding funding for the next-gen workforce. And these are the things that are already included in the budget for that, which would be implementing fifty percent of the pay study recommendations. Um, we're going to do a study of our benefit package and compare it to other municipalities to see how we compare, um, and what we can improve on, what our peers are doing that we're not, and what we're doing that they're not. Um, we also are trying to provide more flexibility to our employees through telecommuting. And we have implemented the, um, hub software system, and we're getting ready to come online with human resources portion of that, which will mean increased access for HR-related inquiries and changes for all employees. We also have initiatives underway to partner with FTCC, Fayetteville State, Fort Bragg, and Workforce Development to increase, increase awareness and visibility of our city as employer of choice in our metro area. At Risk Youth Programs was another topic that was added to the parking lot. Um, and we currently have Community Safety Micro Grant Program funded at two hundred thousand dollars. The first round of awards just happened on Monday, and it totaled fifty thousand dollars that was awarded to thirty-two applicants. And I've looked over the list, and around seventy-five percent of those awards went to specific initiatives that targeted at Risk Youth. Then we had a request to add, um, increased gunshot detection technology, specifically ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter provides coverage for three square miles of our city only. It has an initial cost.
Council member here.
Of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and recurring annual maintenance costs of two hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. We currently do have a gunshot tech, detection technology that we are implementing. It is just not ShotSpotter. We also had a request for information about financing Sherwood Park Recreation Center and Maker Space. The estimated interest rate, um, to do that would be four point two-five percent, which is subject to change based on when we went out for the financing. The estimated principal would be around eight million dollars. The minimum interest that we would pay in total over the course of the twenty years would be three point six million, which would bring our total cost for those projects in at eleven point six million. And our debt payments would start at around seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and decrease down to four hundred and twelve thousand per year for the twenty years that we would have to finance that. There was also a request for infrastructure improvements in Bonny Doon. And so we do continue to have discussion with PWC regarding the installation of water and sewer in that area as the area is improved and developed, and we will, of course, continue to do that. But at this time, that's not something that we can pursue, per se. Then homelessness and affordable housing strategies were also included. And those were presented, again, to council on Monday, um, at the work session. Then there was interest in the concierge program expansion. That was funded in the current fiscal year at ten thousand dollars as a pilot program. It's designed to improve hospitality and cleanliness in the downtown area by providing direction and wayfinding assistance, connecting homeless populations to services, providing safety escorts, downtown litter abatement, and many other services that engage downtown visitors. ECD is recommending funding for that at another fifteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three using CBTD funds. The community beautification funding was another item of interest that y'all expressed last week. Um, our standard level of funding for that is twenty thousand dollars a year. It is specifically for neighborhood signage in subdivisions. The general fund funding for twenty-two has been exhausted, and projects have already been identified for a portion of the twenty-three general fund funds. Um, grant funds are also available for beautification efforts in qualified census tracts. And as the general fund funding of twenty thousand dollars is depleted during fiscal year twenty-three, staff will return to council and request an appropriation of additional funds at that time. And that pretty much sums up the parking lot. If I have missed anything, please bring it to my attention. We did receive an email from a council member today about another item. Um, and we would like to bring that back to council at a work session what, because it's a, a multi-agency request, it's not just the city. Um, so we'd like to bring that back to council at a work session when we, we've had time to get a plan in place for that.
Thank you. So do have some questions. Now, these proposed actions that you mentioned under each topic, where do they come from? Like, when you go to, go, go back a previous slide, let me get another example. Let's say, uh, keep going. Let's go to the, to the workforce piece.
To the which?
Next generation workforce, so.
Next gen workforce, yes, sir.
Or, uh, the youth, the youth violence program, so. Go to the next slide? Okay, so basically, where did you get, uh, you basically tried to identify things that we were already doing in this space?
Yes, sir.
Because the, that's not the, the, the spirit of, of kind of what I was meaning by that. These are micro grants that you, you're talking here, which is between fifteen hundred and five thousand.
Yes, sir.
To nonprofits and community watchers, what have you.
Right.
Talking a little higher level, uh, if you were with a larger organization, a, a boys' and girls' club or, or something to that effect, some type of larger partnerships. Same concept, but not fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars to do smaller things. So tonight, is it the, what is the end game tonight? Is it to, to receive, uh, consensus for allocation? And then the council comes back with the initiative, and the money's pulled from there, Mr. Manager? Or when this is adopted, this is the concept that you're putting forward? Because if not, then we need to, to make sure that, as council understands each one of these parking lot items that various council members have placed on the board, we need to make sure, in order to obtain consensus, that it reflects what we're asking.
Yes, sir. So if, city manager, are you comfortable with my response? So my goal for tonight is just to say, what funds do you want to allocate? Anything that's up on the parking lot board, we can certainly flesh out deeper and bring back to council with a firmer amount and appropriated.
So these are just dollar amount set aside?
They're, they're, if that's what council decides. Um, my preference would be to let staff go back and invest some time in this and come back to you in August and September. Because the majority of the items on your list are just one-time funding items that we can appropriate. There's very little on your list that would require recurring costs. Um, so in order to appropriate the correct amount, or at least be in the ballpark, um, I would appreciate it if you'd give staff time to go back and really flesh out and make sure that we're meeting the needs and the interests of council, and we're not just haphazardly reserving funding that we could use for a better purpose.
Okay. All right, council, that's all hands, questions? Council member here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, three items. Didn't, uh, hope that we can move forward. Wh- wh- that the, for number one, the, the infrastructure one that we, that you had on the parking lot list for the Bonny Doon area. And you sort of, you, you kind of slighted that one away, saying that, well, you know, what the response was. I, I beg to differ for water and sewer insulation with, with the major project that we have that's going on in Military Business Center were proposed with our, uh, number one priority, priority for affordable housing within the city of Fayetteville. And what a perfect location for affordable housing, uh, as we go through the years. We have kicked up the street, down the street, and side to side, uh, the improvements for the Bonny Doon area. We're gonna get the improvements, we're going to attract improvements if we have water and sewer infrastructure, for example, and then we, I, I don't understand how we.
Well, wh- what about considering this, Mr., uh, council member here? What about if it was, I think what makes this a little complicated is the infrastructure piece, right? To, to say specifically, this is about water and sewer there. If, if you took that part off and said, there was certain amount allocated for improvements in the Bonny Doon area, um, would that do it? Because that's kind of how we had to do Merkison Road, you had to intentionally put something aside, and then as the year went by, they, they filled it in with specific projects.
Mayor, I'm very supportive of however we can get it done. And if that means we piece it.
Yeah, and, and we covered.
I'm fine with it, but to say that it doesn't meet.
Because they've zeroed in on infrastructure piece.
Right, right, right.
No, we, we actually.
And I know that's a big piece.
Y- yes, sir, and we, we, we tried to cover that up Monday, where we said that with, um, the focus we're putting on housing, um, and, um, Bonny Doon being one of those areas where, when we have those policies lined up that we talked about from housing on Monday, anybody who makes an effort to go in there, then that's what's gonna be triggering PWC to do water and sewer, and that also would be what would be triggering us to look at sidewalk improvements and other things. We have on your GO bond twenty-five million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements. And of course, council, you can do whatever you'd like with the money. But we don't know that that's gonna pass. And I'd hate for y'all to allocate fifty or sixty thousand dollars for a neighborhood when we have already said we got twenty-five million dollars, and that doesn't even cover all of the ones that we have.
Right, but Doug, just, just one moment, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, I'm with you, I understand. But if, you stated, if someone is gonna go in there, meaning an investor, or even us, whatever, whatever, whatever. But if we entice the, the, the menu, like with the, the water and sewer, so that's what I'm saying. I, I still, I, I'm not backing up on that. Uh, however we want to do it, if, if it means the caveat that the mayor just mentioned, I'm all for it, because it's better than not having anything at all. So I'm, I'm fine with that, Mayor, if that's, if that's how we can get it done. But to say nothing, it's a perfect location for the growth that's what's going on, uh, in, in our area, especially with, uh, two ninety-five, right where it is, it's, it's perfect.
Well, well, not just that part. I mean, we have areas of the city that deserve public dollar investment.
Yeah, yeah.
This is one of them, right? And so whether sidewalks today, or whether it's incentivized dollars that's set aside for us to determine later. We started Merkison Road's, uh, process out when you all were here, but prior to me coming on council, maybe with a hundred thousand dollars, saying this is gonna be used in this area for improvement. So maybe if we use that premise for whatever the dollar amount is, we assign an amount, we call it improvements for Bonny Doon area, and then we fill in, uh, the specifics as things come about, whether infrastructure grants or the bond passes.
Mayor, I think as well, and, um, I, I lived over there, as you know, Mr. Here. I lived in the area. And one of the things that I'm very proud of is that this year we put in sidewalks on Helen Street.
Yes, we did.
And as you know, we didn't extend them further down Helen Street, because there are ditches and swales there. And until we have a drainage system in place, which hopefully will come with development, we probably won't be able to put sidewalks there, because there are, there are those many swales and ditches there.
Yeah, and that's, we've been talking about that.
We, i- if council wants to make an investment over there, I can tell you that Michael Gibson could find a number of ways that we could do something with the Roy Turner Park, um, partnership with, uh, with the, the church there. Um, but I, I would prefer to use the approach that Kelly just. But I would prefer to use the approach that Kelly, Budget Director Olivera, talked about, which is, give us the task and let us come back with a plan to focus on that, but...
Well, tonight, we're talking money, so we need to either assign, if this is supported, assign some dollar amount, and you come back and say, hey, you know, because it's not just, to me, the sidewalks, or extension, or infrastructure, water, sewer. It may be an intentional program that you have for people who, to rehab homes, or to, and I know we doing things now, but that's done with the strings that HUD attaches to it. So if you don't qualify for that, then community development is not an option, so.
Help me with what the consensus would be, need to be asked of.
If there's support for it, I'd say we had to sign some dollar amount to it, have it over there, and then the specifics can be filled in. And if there's other money that comes, then you, you know, they always tell us the money doesn't...
I'm asking for support for that tonight, Mayor.
All right. So, I have a couple more council members. Did you have something specific on that, Ms. Olivera?
I did. If you don't mind if I add, we still have quite a lot of our ARPA funding that we need to identify very specific expenditures for. Anything that is sidewalk-related in a qualified census tract would be a wonderful use of those funds.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's part of another larger conversation that we will be having with you guys as staff works through potential ideas for those dollars. You know, we're going to come to you and make sure that that's how you want that money spent. And this type of conversation is very valuable for that future planning, because it gives us an idea of where you want us to invest those dollars, and what type of proposals you would like us to bring back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And if I could just complete my other ones, Mayor, these are a lot shorter. In the budget, we have twenty K for the annual community signs. And in our last budget, we had seventy-five thousand. And I heard that it's, all of that funding is presently obligated for tasks, for goals already. I would appreciate us thinking about maybe adding even a little bit more back to it, just due to the fact of the personal lift that that gives to communities that get involved with it. You see what we've done. We've had several in my district, several in others. And it's such a personal thing to our community to have entrance signs. I just turned one in today, so that's another fault. And the shotgun spotter for the three square miles, a projection at two hundred and ninety-five thousand. I thought that we also were waiting to hear back from what our police were observing.
I think Councilmember Ingram had placed that item, so we're going to come to it.
I wanted to see how successful we were.
Yeah, she can kind of explain about...
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Kinsey.
Back, Ms. Olivera, to the long, it was a longer list. I think it may have been two back. Okay, two more, I'm sorry. It was the one we was talking about, the, yes, the second half of the PACE study. The question on that one is, how far out can we actually push that one? I know that one was kind of already behind the ball, but I just want to kind of discuss and talk about that.
That's really going to depend on the guidance that we get from council. And moving into next year, what those recurring revenues that we're going to need to fund those costs are going to look like. We were blessed this year, again, with our sales taxes still booming, and that's how we were really able to fund this recurring need. I'm not anticipating that to happen again at this time next year. I'm anticipating to be standing in front of you with a very different scenario.
Okay, and I don't mean to come across as being funny when I say this, but that's something that we can't get grant money for.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wright.
So, I've been hearing in the community, we need to do something for our young people. We need, young people don't have anything to do. And, you know, we've done a great job with athletics, the fields and activities when it comes to sports and recreation, in that field of swimming and all of those things. We've done a great job in that area. But they're still saying, you know, there's nothing to do per se. And I think we're going to always hear that on some level. What I was thinking, and staff can look into this and maybe get back with us, but I was looking at partnering with the county, the school, and private entities to initiate, you know, activities such as, you know, art shows, spelling bees, science contests, cutting-edge technology showcases, to really challenge the minds of our young people outside of sports. You know, there are some kids that don't play sports. They're not athletically inclined, although they can go to the gym and shoot the ball around, whatever. But I think we may need to look at kind of stimulating the minds of our young generation that's coming up and challenge them in these areas as well. So, I think if we can look at that, there may be things that's already happening out there. But I'm looking at something that's more broader, wide-range, to encompass, you know, a citywide activity to bring lots of, lots of kids in, like conventions and things of that nature to stimulate. So, I think that will be our next step in trying to challenge our youth and giving them activities, you know, additional activities other than sports. So, I don't know if that sounds far-fetched, or does that sound something that we could initiate as a city to bring the county and other organizations, and schools, and private entities and organizations that's already doing something? But I don't see anything like that on a broad scale that I think that we really need to bring our kids in for the next generation, to, you know, to challenge them, and do contests and awards, and acknowledgements, and to challenge our youth in that area.
That's something that staff can do some research on, sir, and come back with a proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You just recently stated that we have a plethora of ARPA money that still has to be spent, but you just, you said that it would be best if it's spent related to sidewalk projects?
No, I said that we could fund sidewalks in qualified census tracts using ARPA funding.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that is an eligible expenditure.
Is it just sidewalks, or could we do speed strips?
I will have to ask Mr. Redding to check into that, if we can do the rumble strips.
Yes, rumble strips, there we go.
Yeah, that's something that we can certainly look into.
Okay, thank you. And then as a follow-up to what Councilmember Here asked, I did ask that the shot spotter was added, but also in that same meeting, Chief Hawkins did come up and give an explanation about us having, we were testing out something similar. And, but we have something similar that we're testing, it's just not that same vendor. So I was okay with it not being on the parking lot, because she said that we did have something similar. But in the same vein, I have talked to a lot of police officers, and they've said that the license plate reader is more of a help than the shot detector, from what I've been surveying to find out. So, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Ms. Olivera.
You're welcome.
So, thank you, Councilmember. Can you go back to the, Council, I wanted to talk about the premise behind the workforce, next generation. So, you know, every day, we are asked why Apples and Googles and tech companies don't choose our community. We see that investments made in the triangle are paying big dividends today with these type of jobs. Jobs follow the people who train to work in them. The jobs, if your child is in kindergarten now, the job, or even some of the seniors, the jobs that they'll have don't even exist today. So, I was a little disappointed with, this is the version that we're talking about? No strike against whoever put it together. All of this is inward-looking, not outward-looking. This is about what we can do for city staff. This is about what we can do to make our staff better, which I know we're invested in our folks. But I want to look outward, as to how do you attract people who are in the space of cyber, and drones, and STEM, and innovation, and AI, and so on and so forth. That's the next-generation piece I was talking about. And that's nothing that can be done in here. It can, it needs to be money set aside for partnerships to companies who do it. I've had quite a few meetings with people in these different spaces. There's one company who has a federal grant to come into communities like ours, in military communities, that they start with high schoolers. They take them through a STEM-related training through their senior year, and then they place them with jobs at the end of their year. You have Memphis and FedEx work something similar, to where they go into the high schools in eleventh grade. They teach them how to work on airplanes, and they get a sixty thousand dollar job when they graduate. That's more of what I'm talking about, the outward-facing piece of the next-gen piece. So, as you consider that when we go in the parking lot, I just wanted to make sure that council was understanding what I was saying, because the only way we're going to be in the game is to start to build that capacity internally. And we've got to start with these kids now, and so COVID showed us that we are too heavy on service industry and hospitality. So if there's another hiccup, we got hit pretty hard with restaurants closing, hotels, and that kind of thing. So we've got to put some more higher-trained technology jobs here. And everybody's not made to go to college. There's some cyber folks that'll give them a nine, a ten-month certification, and they'll start with a sixty, seventy thousand dollar job at the end of that. So, that's the kind of thing I wanted to make sure that we think about when we do that. If we could appropriate something in a pilot concept, let staff come back and fit some ideas, and see how we can partner with universities and some of these folks.
So are you thinking more of an incentive for the companies to come?
No, ma'am. So basically, what it would be is, one company offered to, there was a collaboration between a company that operated drones, who provide services for doing the maps to Cumberland County and so forth. They're working with them now. There was also a company that did the STEM training. So, and then there's a cyber company that trains in cyber, eighteen-month program for cyber, that connects them to jobs, guaranteed jobs, that would work to, they would put a proposal in, let's say, for instance, or RFQ or P, to come in and to do a program somewhere within our community with a targeted group in our community, whether it's seniors in the schools, or juniors, or whoever. But it's something outward-facing like that, that you're putting these trained, high-dollar salaries to work here. You know, that is why Raleigh and those areas are so hot, because they've invested in technology and medicine. So, I think we've got to start, you know, thinking that way.
Okay, I think I have a better understanding of where you're wanting to head with that.
Yes, ma'am, and the last thing I'll say, if you can go to the slide that showed the eight million dollars, whether paying cash for the rec center or not. So I do understand over twenty years, you're saying, because we heard financing tonight. So that ninety-seven million dollar bond will have four percent interest on it, and you're going to pay back the ninety-seven million plus the bond interest.
Yes, sir, that would be about a hundred and eighteen million.
That's just the way financing works, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the cost of money. So, council, if we take eight million in cash out of the scenario versus seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand a year, we're going to pay interest over twenty years, but what, what are we losing in interest by moving eight million out of the investments we have it in, number one? So that offsets that number, right? So even if it's two percent, it cuts that in half, right?
Yeah, it's not good, and I will look at...
But when borrowing rates go up, the rates that they pay on interest goes up, right?
That's usually correct, sir. We have not been earning very much at all on our investments.
Because rates were low.
Because rates have been low. We have not still this year seen any increase that I would, that would make me feel more comfortable.
Well, we're not doing it to make money, like, this is not, yeah. So, but what I'm saying is, the net won't be eleven million, because you're taking the use of that money out of play for twenty years. So, how many of these initiatives for this council and future councils can you use that for? But financing, that's just something to consider as we're talking about that.
Right, so we're not even making one percent
Okay.
on our investments right now.
Well, you need to change investors.
It's, we're going with the best that we can get, and it's just, nobody's wanting to pay anything.
Yeah.
But like you said, as interest rates for financings go up, they also do for investments.
And CDs and so forth, yeah.
And four point two-five percent is just our guess as what it would be when we do these financings.
Yeah.
It may be higher, it may be lower.
No, understood, but the point for council is, as we're looking at projects that we don't have enough money to incorporate, just think about building, paying cash for your car or financing it is basically what this boils down to. It costs you more, but, you know, was the use of the money better served with, in your, yeah, was the use of the money better served when you got a lot of needs? So, you know, that pay-go, you know, is a very slow-growth model, you know, but I know y'all wanted to put money on the street. But then, on the flip side, I don't want to hear that we don't have money for stuff like Bonny Doon, because we're paying cash for building when we can finance it.
Absolutely, clearly understood, sir.
Yeah, all right. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to piggyback off your next-gen statement. I would say, even look into the programs that are currently at E.E. Smith, Mr. Underdo. They're actually, are training students to get their commercial drone license. So once they're finished, they're already making sixty-five, sixty thousand dollars from there. So, and they have robotics there, they have simulators there. So they're actually one of the only schools here that is doing that. So I think tap into there, because they're on to something. I know other schools as well, but I'm specifically talking about E.E. Smith now, simply because it ties into that next gen, because we're, they're tapping into the interests of a lot of young individuals, like technology, things of that nature. So they are tapping into that. And then, just looking at, for example, Amazon coming there, they're also doing and building and learning about robotics that will control some of the assembly-line robots. So that would be a potential where they could go train them to work on, perform maintenance there. So it's just, I just wanted to put that out there, that you have some, we have some options out there. And that school, I just wanted to pinpoint what they were doing there, because it falls directly in line with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Wright.
Finally, I wanted to just make a statement. You know, we have a lot of crime going on all around the country, different types of crimes. And we trying to figure out, how do we stop this crime? How do we control, you know, the crime rates, particularly young people from ages maybe thirteen to thirty? When I was the president of the Ministerial Council, we gave scholarships to deserving students going to college for the first time. They went through a curriculum of tests, essays, boards, and those that flowed to the top got the scholarships. I worked with FTCC in the Hope Program, and they get money from the federal. And the program is so robust and so successful. I was thinking, what can we do to maybe assist and to work with the colleges to help, you know, promising youth, to get them into school? And so I was, just wanted to throw this out to the council and to staff about starting a scholarship program from the city. And they were telling me that five hundred dollars was enough money to get a young person through the Volk Rehab Program, and to land jobs, and to get certifications that will, that they can make a living coming out of that school. And what I was thinking of dealing with, maybe the churches, organizations, nonprofits, identifying promising youth, and even troubled youth, that are troubled for whatever reason, but they're still bright, to help get them off the streets and give them something to do that will give them hope. And so, this scholarship program, and that there are other cities across the country that are doing these type of programs, and assisting in helping the schools and students to connect. And so I think that that would be something great as well. And this will help combat the crime, and also getting our youth off the streets and putting them into educational environments to give them a better future.
So, Councilmember Wright, Mr. Colley, don't your department have something where you help pay for books and tuition for trades? But it's done with block grant dollars, right? So, which is restricted, so now if there's a will that you can add general fund dollars with less restrictions, and can... So now if there's a will that you can add general fund dollars with less restrictions and, and can expand who benefits from it? Because I know I pointed a few people to them that were signing up for barber school, beauty school, didn't have the money to buy the kits. And then you, you all through your program, Chris, with fun, some portion of that, correct? I mean, I put you on the spot, but.
That's so good, that's good.
That's what I'm here for tonight. So, uh, yeah, we, we paid that $500 for the Hope Program. That's, we do that for construction, job skills training, books and things like that. We actually expanded that in our CDBG funds this year. Uh, to your point, it, it does have income restrictions, but you, I mean, you're talking about, you know, col-, you know, college age students that are looking to get in trades and things like that. I mean, most, the vast majority of them are going to be under that 80% restriction. I, I, I struggle to think of many folks that we've actually turned away from that program. And that has been incredibly successful.
Did they take their parents' income or theirs?
Uh, it's their household income. So it, it kind of depends, right?
So if the parents are not under the threshold and they don't qualify, right?
Right, yeah. And we, we'd have to look into how, if we could go further than that low income restriction, even with general fund dollars, we just have to do some research on that.
And I would say we, we, we have to push that because really if we're involved in a program to give incentives and then we can't give the incentives to the kids that need it the most, then why are we doing it? You know, then, you know, they still falling through the cracks. And those are the ones that say that I have no hope. They didn't give me because, again, we didn't meet the qualifications. So I think if we can lag some of those restrictions and actually impact those that need it the most, I think we'll find ourselves in a better place.
Yes, sir. The, the ones that need it the most are those low income students that do qualify for it. So, I mean, I, I think that there, there might be a middle income folks that are, that are gapped, but the, the need it the most part is.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that you have some people who, who don't meet that threshold, who, who bottom line of, of the threshold, but still have a challenge if they have to pay, you know, $500 to, to get into a trade that they can then sustain themselves.
Mr. Mayor, what we, I'd love to do is to, again, come back to y'all with some information. We're not the only funder in town.
Right.
And there are, um, uh, with all of the money that the federal government has put on the street for job training, one of the challenges that we've had in putting together the budget is traditionally in cities in North Carolina, we have not done health and human services. And we've realized over the last five years that because of the unique nature of our community, because some of our partners may not have done certain things or marketed the programs as much, that we have to get involved and to be more intentional about public housing. We have to get more intentional about homelessness. We have to get more intentional about mental health, have to get more intentional about job training. And we have done all of those things. But as you and I have talked about, the more we do, sometimes the more other people pull back. And so this would be a wonderful topic, um, uh, for us to be able to do some research on it. Because if there was a way for us to do that using general fund dollars, I would say, of course, we would, we'll take a look at it. But we, we even struggle to and don't offer educational incentives to our employees to necessarily better themselves. So like tuition reimbursement for them to, if it is something that we can say, um, that is directly related to your job, that makes you better on your job. But it was on, it, it was a few managers ago that allowed an employee who was a janitor to use a city bus to actually qualify for their CDL and became a bus driver. I mean, we have, and again, so you have no pushback from staff at all about that. And so when we looked at that next gen slide about, and it did seem heavy on city staff. That's our, you know, that's, that's the family, as is the community. So we'd be happy to come back and looked at what programs Chris has, how we might be able to leverage those, as well as give some information about what all the money is on the street about right now with the ARPA that is available. Cause as Mr. Harris said, even about the GO bond, it's about the marketing piece. If people don't know about it, they can't access it. But I would hate to think that we, we're not the only ones that earn this place space.
Right, alright, thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna, um, kind of touch on to just while we're around this workforce development, um, on something Councilmember Jones said and just hopefully we can broaden it because we're all saying some really good stuff. And perspective from someone who went through the same, similar program at Douglas Byrd, where I was in high school, but I took classes at FTCC. And when I graduated high school, I was a certified electrician based off of the track that we wanted to do. But at the same time, while we were in high school, our infield training was doing the habitat homes on Old Wilmington Road. So we did that electrical work. So what I would like is, um, to just, this is just a, um, strategy. Look at all the high schools to keep include of the, the, our colleges. But look at all the high schools and look at that, um, the ones that actually have that, that pipeline and, and ask the question, what type of support within our reach can we do? Because as the city manager said, we're not the only funders in this, in the city. And as you stated, I wouldn't want us to be putting money where we can use it for something else. And I'm not saying not help, help work where, where we really need the help. But some of these programs, they get a lot of good funding. And I also, I think is like, like the spelling bees and stuff. I, I judge a lot of debates for, for students and I sit in a lot of spelling bees. It's about marketing as well. We don't know about it, so I ju-, I think as more of, as a strategy, just look at it and ask the question, what support is needed? And maybe we can work with our partners to make it a bit more broadened. Thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Kinson, and then I'll, uh, ask a question of you, council on something.
Yes, thank you, mayor. One of the things that I wanted to mention is, and I was, I wasn't going to say anything, but now that we've already started the conversation, is with our teen CERT program with the fire department. Um, I don't know if you can come up and speak with that, about that. But during the summer, we have a CERT program that is coming out of the North Carolina Volunteer and Community Service, which is also partnered with, um, Teen CERT here in town, which is Melanie. And the goal of that through our office or my office there is to promote, um, one, volunteerism in the city and then two, get the youth interested in going into those fields. This is something that's not funded through the city. It is, you know, through grant purposes, they don't get a lot of money to do it. But that partnership is there, um, that would be something if we're going to have that conversation, I would love to be able to, you know, try to expand that if you can explain how that works. I mean, we just did it with, um, Feval State with Upward Bound. Um, I believe there was like 30 children or 30 young adults that attended there. And then next week on the 13th, there's a new one that's starting and then one the following week. But you can kind of.
I think you just covered it all.
Well, it's what I do, but, but I'm just saying it, it's a wonderful program, but that would also fill a gap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point, so council, as, uh, as we wrap this up, um, you know, I guess when you go to the whiteboard or is the whiteboard coming to us or how's that going to work?
Forget.
When do we get into the numbers of, of what it is?
Right now.
Okay. And, and the other question is, can you go back to the concierge program for downtown?
Yes, sir.
So, council, I think we need to, I haven't seen anyone wearing a shirt saying Fayetteville Ambassador. I know we talked about that a few times. So if, okay, if, if this is, is that, tell me a little bit about, uh, what you mean with the safety escorts? And is this an existing program? Cause I surely haven't seen, there's a lot of panel handling homeless, almost accosting of people every day. I'm witnessing downtown to where, uh, from people, um, with mental issues, it makes it a very uncomfortable space in our area that we're trying to attract people. And, you know, the police guys are doing a great job, but it's only two of them. And so they miss a lot. I mean, I'm seeing it firsthand. So I would like to see if there's an expansion of the ambassador program to where folks are actually down there to make people feel safe. I see the parking guys writing tickets every day. But I'm talking about someone that actually helps people along and makes them feel comfortable when they have that kind of stuff going on.
So this, this was a fairly short-lived pilot program that we did. So we, we hired a gentleman that was, uh, just recently out of homelessness. And, um, that one didn't quite work out as, as well. Then we hired this lady that, that worked for several months until the funding ran out this past year. Um, and so a lot of what she did was a lot of general cleanup. You know, when the fall came, she helped with the leaves. But really while we were looking for someone with lived experience in homelessness was for that peer support aspect. To be able to talk to somebody, not from a law enforcement standpoint or from a, you know, we need to move you along, but to talk to you about resources that are available and where you can go.
So this is different than what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is, you know, some cities have an ambassador, hey, you know, and, and they give a sense of being a security person, but they're not law enforcement. But it gives a sense of safety when someone's catching you coming out of ATM asking you for money or some guys having a, a episode in front of everybody while they're having dinner or so forth. So, cause I knew 15K wouldn't cover that. So that's, this is something different.
No, that's, that's essentially the same thing, except if you're talking about one person part-time at $15,000 a year.
Yeah, but that's not going to get it. So I'm hoping council that, that we would reconsider that because, you know, the experience is everything with, with people coming down here and it's bad. I mean, you need to come, come down here one afternoon and see how bad it is. So if that is, 15K is not going to get it. And I'm not talking about hiring somebody who's homeless that you're trying to, to give an uplift to. I'm talking about someone that actually makes you feel safe or a few people that, that walk around and engage the public, but also are there to kind of give you some sense of safety in some respect without being law enforcement.
Yes, sir. And, uh, uh, the budget director, let me step into the budget a little bit. So, so about $15,000 is pretty much everything we can squeeze out of the MSD fund. So if anything else would need to be general funded.
That, that's, that's what this time is for, yes, sir.
Well, I, I, I agree with the mayor. I had an experience this last week and I was, I was just driving through Hay Street and it was a beautiful day, sunshine. You see families with their kids, you know, clean cut folk and they just having a good time. And then I looked to my, my left and I saw a guy that didn't have on a shirt. His pants were sagging and he kind of looked like he was out of it. And then I saw people clenching their, you know, their kids and, and stuff like that. And I was like, well, how can we? And he looked like he might've been on something. And I was like, wow, so it was just a, a, a contrast to the, the environment that you tried to create. And we're pumping a lot of money into downtown. And I think the mayor is so right, uh, and it just brought that right back to me. How can we solve that? But on the other hand, the, these folk has to be trained to, to not feel like if you're a certain type of a person, that you are, you know, that you may be a, a threat because of your, of the, of the clothes you wear or the, or the way you fix your hair. So it's more, it's more than that. So they have to be trained, don't, don't, we're going to have some other problems downtown.
So, Councilwoman Ingram, you had something to add?
Um, no, sir. Actually Director Colley really gave the what I was going to give.
Yeah, so the, so the source of funds, I understand MSD is the extra tax that they pay for extra service. So, so right now, I'm just saying if there's consideration, there's a need. So we're just talking about the identification of funds. So I'm hoping council will consider adding that to, to hire a couple of actual positions to help with our patrol guys that are, they're doing the best they can, but you just need more presence, particularly after these games. It, it's really bad after the games because they know the games get out at a certain time. And it is tough down there after the games.
Mr. Mayor, I will add that, um, when I initially brought this item to council as a work session on behalf of Cool Springs, there was a presentation attached to it. So I recycled that presentation back out to the council and staff so they can use it for their research purposes.
Yeah, thank you. I do remember we, we, we've talked about ambassadors, even when Cool Springs was being created, that that was supposed to be one of the things they did. But we've got to put some money to it for it to be real. I mean, so, alright, so, uh, council, if not, we'll go to Ms. Alavera and this whiteboard. Part of the discussion.
We'll just run down these items, um, one at a time. And if council will give a consensus vote, that will give us discuss, direction. If there is a different amount that you would like put on the board or an amount period that you would like put on the board, please let us know and then we can do the consensus run through for voting on that. So the $15 an hour pay, which would be a $484,000 year recurring impact. We've already taken steps to make that happen, um, with our recruiting, but what is your pleasure for that ongoing?
Yeah, I thought we were pretty clear on that. But the show of hands on $15 an hour minimum for all seasonal, for all, all employees to include seasonal part-time. Alright.
Okay, I see the ayes have it. And then the multi-purpose indoor sports, um, is council comfortable with, um, not allocating funding for that?
Yeah, because there was a conversation today with, uh, and so they're, they were presenting to the county, uh, they work with Michael. So I don't know that, that that is quite ready for budgetary amount.
Right, I don't think so either. And I, I'm not sure what level would require any money. So are you guys?
Question, I'm sorry, just for just my understanding. When you was going through the presentation, when we got to that item, you said that we were, we were to look at partnership. Right, okay. So are you asking, are we okay with still looking at partnership? Or are you looking at funding based off of what you said in the presentation?
I'm looking at funding. Is it okay if we come back to you with discussion about partnership? If you don't put funding, if you don't, I mean.
Can you state your question plainly?
So is council okay with not allocating any funding for the multi-use, multi-purpose indoor sports facility? For this budget, yes, sir, for the 23 budget.
To council at a later time, I guess.
Yes, sir. If council would like to add anything during the course of the fiscal year for that, we would certainly bring a funding appropriation forward at that time.
Alright, you have a question, ma'am? Oh, okay, alright. So we're okay with that? You don't need to vote.
Okay.
We're, council, we're only voting on, okay, so. Yeah, so we're not voting on, we're not, that one didn't take action. This is just for things to be included.
I do have a question.
Yes.
The multi-purpose, that's not the aquatic center, that's something so told, something different.
That's something else, yep. So council's consensus is to not put funding to this item at this time?
There, there's none been formally requested, so they're still working on the partnership agreement.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so the consensus is yes for that one? The walking trail at Lake Rim, which would be a one-time funding of $35,000. Do we have consensus to add that item?
Councilwoman Kinson, you're in? Alright.
The outdoor basketball courts, um, we're not proposing to add additional funding.
Because you have those courts programmed in already for.
We have them programmed in for the, the, the courts that haven't been improved. We have them programmed in already and it's funded for those improvements. So consensus to leave that funding as it is?
What were you saying, sir? At, you mean another location? Well, I mean, we've got to have a site. So that's something that I guess, yeah, that's something that probably since we don't have a site and a. Sherwood Park is having problems with access. So I'm, I'm leery to put anything else out there until, no, that's not, what's the name of the, the park over there? Where they having issues with the elementary school? Montclair, I'm sorry. Not Sherwood, my apologies. Alright, keep, keep rolling, Ms. Alavera.
We can come back if that's your pleasure, sir. So consensus to not add additional funding for outdoor courts at this time?
That's right.
Okay. Next gen workforce, um, we're not adding additional funding, but we're going to come back to council?
Well, when, when a proposal arrives, is that what you're saying?
We're, yes, sir. We will look at the information that you have provided us about avenues. And if a funding need is there, we would come back to council with the funding need.
Well, council, the consideration is this. I don't, I think that in the past, we've appropriated some line item for the thought of the initiative, right?
Okay.
And you may not have the details to it. Of course, we're going to leverage any dollars that are out there. But I would hope that there's some amount allocated in a pilot perspective. You know, it's a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. And if it, if nothing comes up for it, because this past year we did appropriate it for something that ended up very useful at the time when FSU came in. And we took something that was, that was in that space and we, we had a firm partnership agreement and, and it was, it was able to be done relatively quickly. So I would hope that, um, that, that we can set aside, you know, just a pilot of the amount, maybe a hundred thousand to, to see. And then we'll, it certainly won't be used without council's approval and appropriation, is that right?
That is right. We would come back to council with any details about it now. It will be appropriated.
But not, uh, not spent?
Not spent, that's correct. We would, we would hold it. I wouldn't let Michael get his hands on that or whoever.
We know how money evaporates, right? Alright, so you need a.
Is it a hundred thousand dollars that you? Is it a hundred thousand dollars that you, I?
Yeah, I was just saying from a pilot, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If that's the consensus of council.
All right, so council, a show of hands if there's a, if there's support for that.
Okay, very good. So our at-risk youth programs, there again, we're planning on coming back to council with additional programs, as we identify funding sources, um, whether it's ARPA funding and qualified census tracts and part of that funding, or if it's grant opportunities. But if it's your pleasure to add money, the same that we just did for the next-gen workforce?
You know, let me say this before we, uh, take that. Um, you know, what I mentioned about the, um, the art shows, the science contests, the technology, cutting-edge showcases and things like that, I, I think you, you guys are gonna come back to us with some ideas and with some research. But I think when you talk about troubled youth, we, we want to solve the problems that sometimes are, are caused by troubled youth. And I think by doing this and giving an initiative and coming back with some type of program that we can get youth involved in, I think that, you know, equates to putting something to the side to give hope that these programs can be a reality.
Well, well, this was a parking lot item that I, that I added, that the thought process I had was that there would be, uh, if money was appropriated, that there would, there would be an RFQ to an organization that was specialized in this space, like a Boys and Girls Club, or one of the other mentoring groups. What was the, um, the one that used to be, um, not the NMI program, but there, there was a, there was one that Carl Merritt used to run, what was the name of that, that group?
Uh, Gray Oaks.
Uh-huh?
Gray Oaks.
Gray Oaks, yeah, or, or something that concentrated in a certain space, if there's a RFQ. So let me ask you this, before RFQ or request for qualifications or, or RFP is put out on the street, does the money have to be appropriated?
Yes, sir.
So this prevents any RFPs from, from being put out in those spaces without an appropriation. So, um, council, it was basically the same concept as the micro grant, but on a larger scale. Not a fifteen hundred dollar or five thousand dollar grant, because this may be an organization that comes with it. I'm looking to enhance the public-private partnership versus just public-public stuff, because having to convince another board to do it, not mission creep, but basically just saying that we want, we need to engage more people to help in a space that we currently don't have the capacity to do.
Mr. Mayor, I think in, in my perspective, there are a lot of, there are a lot of organizations out there that are doing, um, doing really great programs with, with students, of children, right? And I think they just need funding, period. And so rather, and I, you can figure out how to do it, Greater Life United, they're based out of Orange Street School, they could use the support, fascinate you, they need, they need a good help of, help of support and reworking. Um, of course, the Boys and Girls Club, but these, these actual, uh, organizations that are housed somewhere, they could take on more, um, Cape Fear Regional Theater, they could take on more if they had the means to. And so I think, once again, going back to my point earlier, look at what the, what these entities are doing, and then approach them to see how we can help, if that's what we're saying that we want to do, but I, I, I think, from my perspective and what I hear in the community, re-inventing the wheel to come up with another something, is, I think, is, is, that, that's, that's gonna be a, a little convoluted, but I think going to the people who are already doing the work, uh, and giving them the extra means to do it will be a lot more better.
Yeah, council, I mean, you know, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying create a new program, what I'm saying is appropriate the dollars and approach those same entities that you said, like you said, would do more if they had an additional twenty thousand dollars, or if they had an additional fifty thousand dollars. Could they expand it and they articulate it? Because what I understood, I did recall this, that you can't even solicit, uh, services without having the money set aside. Is that correct? So we're saying the same thing, yeah, I'm not saying create a new.
Are we saying one entity or multiple?
Well, I, I don't think you can just say, give this money to them, and not give everyone an opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so basically, it was the same concept of a pilot to appropriate, you know, whether seventy-five thousand dollars or a hundred, whatever, uh, to give the opportunity to say, hey, we're gonna be putting out a request for proposals in, in October to do this, these following things. And if we get someone that we're comfortable with and you award it, or if you get two people and, or not, so. That was the ask of council as we were doing it, just the, the dollars for it, yes, sir.
Uh, so Mr. Mayor, is, is this a place where we recommend between each other what amount would be appropriate?
We'd have to tell her an amount in order to not exceed amount, so.
Maybe two hundred thousand?
Yeah, I like that, I mean, money doesn't evaporate, so it can go back if it's not used, correct?
Then you could give up four, fifty thousands, or five, forty thousand.
And we certainly want to give enough for them to succeed.
And I was gonna say, mayor, too, um, as well as the funding, we have our recreation centers that can also be utilized for space, so we might want to consider that, too.
So, all right, so council, is there consensus, maybe two hundred? All right, uh, show of hands for that?
And also I will add to this, like I said, for the mini-grants, and I don't know if they did this for the mini-grants, but if they end up using our, our facilities, then waive those fees for them, because a lot of that can eat up their budget, if they use our facility.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Alavera, it's on you.
So the gunshot detection technology?
I think she said her question was answered by chief.
That's null and void, we're good.
Off the table, the financing of the Makerspace and the Sherwood Park Rec Center. So that is something that you do not have to decide tonight. Um, you have received the information about it, and it is something that we could include in future conversations about ARPA funding, um, and you do not have to make a decision tonight. If you decide to proceed that way, I will change the capital funding plan, um, and the CIP and TIP that you will hopefully adopt on Monday.
Councilmember Dave?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that, um, that this area, Sherwood Park area, while we are working through some of the excess challenges, um, if we can resolve those, I think we'd have to push to serve those, that donut hole that's already been identified multiple years in our budgets. Um, again, we need to work to fix the excess issue, meaning people who need to use the facility, need to be able to use the facility, and I have faith that the city management staff can fix that. But I would be completely in support of making that next rec center right there, that place and starting it, because those three to four thousand kids, Douglas, Bird, Aaron, they need a, a facility, they deserve one.
Well, I think, I think it's good consistency.
We understood that, and that's why it's already included in the CIP.
I think they're just talking about now source of funds, so whether it's, whether it's set the money aside, I'm, I'm okay with appropriating it, and if they come back and the council decides to, because at least they can get the process started with RFPs for design and so forth. But if we, if you decide it's better to finance it versus not, I think that's something that, what, a budget ordinance adjustment, amendment or something? How would you do that? If you set aside eight million and it's encumbered, how do you do it if you decide to, to bank finance it?
So we would just change the capital funding plan and bring capital project ordinance amendments back to you. So what will happen on Monday, if you decide to do the finance, the financing, we will bring two capital project ordinances to you to appropriate with the budget to finance those two facilities. If you subsequently decide that you want to use ARPA funding for it, or we identify a grant for it, uh, or whatever source of funding, whether it's state-direct funding, um, we would bring forth a capital project ordinance amendment to change the source of funding from our money to whatever it was going to be. Likewise, if you choose to do nothing tonight, it will remain in the CIP as a project that is an, an initiative that we are actively trying to fund, using ARPA or state grants. And once we have those identified, we would bring an ordinance forward at that time.
All right, so if we leave it like it is, it, it'll be adopted when the budget is adopted, because it's in there now, right?
It's in there now, yes, sir, it just will be with funding from an outside source. It will not tie up any of our capital funding dollars.
What about the timeline for that? Like, when you say funding, I mean, that can be a two-year timeline, that could be a seven-year.
Well, it don't move fast now, you know?
Yeah, but the minutes.
So we're planning on coming to you guys back, um, I know, within the next couple of months, with some very specific uses of our ARPA funding. Um, and if that is something that you would like to pursue, and if another funding source has not been identified for those two things at that time, you could give us the approval to move forward. Um, I know that, uh, in the CIP, Makerspace is planned for, um, a considerable amount of work in the coming year. Um, and I know Sherwood Park is identified to be started.
But it was, but Makerspace was also submitted on the project list for the state delegation who asked for things that we needed, out of the six billion dollars.
So once, if they award that, we would bring that appropriation to you immediately.
Okay.
If it, and, and I mean, we're, we're off the month of July for meetings, so we won't be bringing any appropriations to you at that time. But we will be continuing to work to identify initiatives that we want to propose for the ARPA funding for you, so that when you come back in August, we hit the ground running um, with some very clearly defined things that we're presenting to you for your review and approval for that money.
All right, council, we, we clear on that, it's, it's in the budget now with, with the sources that can be modified, so. All right, Ms. Alavera, keep rolling.
The infrastructure in Bonny Doon. Um, so again, sir, my understanding of it, and I apologize if I misunderstood your intent, was more of a water and sewer, um, bring there. And I think that, like city manager said, that will come as that area develops, because it is very ripe for development, and as we move forward with those economic developments, that will be addressed at the time. Um, the sidewalks, we, again, if that's, we heard you loud and clear that that's an area that you would like additional attention put to. Um, and we certainly, in moving through our ARPA funding list with the sidewalks, there may be other things other than sidewalks that we could fund in that area. If I'm not mistaken, I think it is in a qualified census tract, but we would certainly, certainly confirm that before we looked at what ARPA was eligible as far as infrastructure improvements in that area, and bring that forward to you.
If I may, go ahead, mayor. I, I, I was gonna propose that, uh, you know, we, we've covered the infrastructure part of the conversation. I think councilman here was amenable to improvements targeted at Bonny Doon, so maybe a number like five hundred thousand appropriated, um, initially. I mean, we may not have all the projects specific, but it may have, uh, you know, that's how it starts, it's gotta start somewhere, so.
Right.
Um, I think that we had three point four million dollars of fund balance above your twelve percent goal. When we take out the four fifty for the Black Voices Museum, that leaves three million. We've added two hundred thousand dollars for something a moment ago, and we have not even talked about the what-ifs of, of those things. So I just want to say that half a million dollars is significant above the twelve.
All the more reason that we shouldn't be paying eleven million dollars in cash to build a couple of buildings, and one of which is on a list to come from the state, uh, for projects.
Which one is that?
Right.
Which one is that?
That's the Makerspace, that was submitted to the delegation as an ask.
Well, that is if they find money and find that project favorable.
Yeah, I, I understood, but my point is, you know, i- it's like some things have urgency and some don't. You know, we're talking eleven million, eight million dollars to build out of cash, the same cash pot, which I know it's ARPA-related, but if there's a cash flow problem, I don't, that doesn't make any sense to use eight million dollars to pay cash for something like that.
Well, we're not using, we're using ARPA money, and that is, and those are eligible expenses for the ARPA funds.
The, the, the point that I'm making, uh, here is without the projects, you don't know if it's, it's ARPA-qualified or not, it's certainly an impoverished area, right?
Well, we, we, we believe, we're, we're hedging our bets and saying about, we're proposing that it's a ARPA project. But we're doing our due diligence with both, um, the federal government, our consultants and staff. So when we say that we are shuttling it and hoping it's funded by ARPA, we are. And again, I'm not making a question about what you just, y'all decided to do about Sherwood Park.
With, with this model that you have, if the council adopts this, this creates a recurring surplus of dollars that will not have to go to fund CIP projects, because you're gonna do them all at one time, of how much? Seven point something million?
It does recreate a recurring bank of dedicated money for capital projects. Um, and so I'm trying to be very intentional with the wording, because the five point oh seven cents is still at your direction dedicated to capital projects. So while we couldn't pull any of that out and pay salaries with it, unless it is for the construction of a capital facility. We can pull that money out and use it for grant matches for capital projects, which is kind of our overarching hope with all of this. And based on the number of grants that we have seen the federal government pushing out, we believe that that's completely doable.
Okay.
So we, we would still be using the five point oh seven cents that accumulates every year for capital initiatives. We would just be increasing it and multiplying it, using it as a force multiplier by using it for grant matches.
So, uh, councilman here, would you want to do two fifty, and then maybe two fifty for the outward year? You, you do that in the CIP, you show a five-year track, correct?
I don't have a problem with the two fifty, I, I do believe that we need to have that appropriation there, uh,
Even be taken serious, yeah.
In order for us to, to move forward, and, and to continue to say, uh, that we're, we're gonna look at it, it's on the list, and not making the appropriation, those are two different things. Because we've been having this discussion too long about what we need to do in that area. We've already started cleaning it and moving it out and having the undeveloped land with what we're, what's going on within the Amazon area, and just the whole future growth of Fayetteville and, and that total connection there to, uh, I-295. Hey, this is essential, team.
And, and the four fifty for the, for the, for the museum proposal was coming out of the money that the state sent us, uh, for those historic projects, wasn't it? Well, why not?
Yes, sir. Those were very specific appropriations that the state sent. Um, and I apologize, I did not bring this to this meeting, um, the action that council took when you appropriated that, but it did include a very specific list that was approved by the state. So the, the Black Voices Museum would be an appropriation of fund balance of, of our money to support that initiative.
Councilmember Ingram, and then Banks-McLaughlin.
So I, I, I lost track for a second. First, uh, when you were talking about the sidewalks, just make sure you check into the rumble strips.
Yes, ma'am, I had that.
And then, um, two fifty for, for what? What, two fifty for now, an outward year, I completely lost me. What are we talking about, the two fifty for infrastructure?
Infrastructure in Bonny Doon.
Yeah, what, what type of infrastructure are we talking about?
I believe councilmember here would like staff to come back with some specific projects for infrastructure, or?
We're not talking about infrastructure, I think he's changed that to improvements of Bonny Doon.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna, whenever after everyone has, uh, spoken, then I will be moving or asking for the consensus for it.
Well, well, I wanted to propose something, once councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, uh, says something.
I'm try, I'm just trying to track here, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars using ARPA funding for?
Oh, ma'am, using our money, using general fund fund balance.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars using general fund dollars for Bonny Doon area for improvements. What kind of improve, like what's, because from my, from my understanding, we have not, the, I'm, so in perspective, um, I'm familiar with Bonny Doon area. Um, I'm familiar with the, um, the housing authority, uh, apartments that are over there. Is that the area you're talking about, talking about directly, or just Bonny Doon in general?
I, I had, I didn't give it a specific, but I do know that, I hadn't given it a specific.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out improvements, if we're talking about redeveloping the area, in my perspective, redevelopment and improvements run line and line, you don't want to make improvements, then you have to go back and tear it up. So that, I think that's where I'm, I think I'm trying to understand what, what we're talking about here.
When you did, Merkison wrote improvements, improvements are bigger than the streets and sidewalks. Uh, i- it's beautification, i- it's landscaping, it's tree planting, it's acquisition of property. It's, it's taking down dilapidated structures.
Which is what I was asking, what are we kind of talking about here?
Well, it, it is, they don't have the specifics of the projects, but what we're talking about now, like we did in every other category, is to appropriate the money, and then you'll fill in the details of the projects, and if you don't have any projects to fit that, then the money goes back into fund balance. And if you don't have any projects to fit that, then the money goes back into fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. Okay, so for, since we're appropriating funding, I know with the Aquatic Center, um, they presented that at our last meeting. Is that something we need to go ahead and put to the side? I know we're supposed to have conversations with the, the county and the school board.
Well, I think at the last meeting, that's where they left that. So it were, there were more players involved. I think Michael told us it was twenty plus million, so.
It would cost about twenty million?
Twenty something, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-six if he's here, but I think they were talking to the other parties, including the guy that you had speak, said that that, that was happening.
And, and I know we're supposed to have our, um, meeting, I plan on bringing that up to, at our city-county liaison because we'll have just about everybody there at the table. Um, if we're appropriating money, if the will of the council, I would like to appropriate money set aside just in case that, um, the county and the, um, school board agree to partner with us. We can already have those funds already set aside. Okay, can you put that on a party?
Well, well, gotta take a consensus on that, and I, I probably need, I probably need a little bit more detail on it, but I, um, I got a question for you about the Bonny Doon discussion here. So we talked about 250. Now, the Makerspace, did you have the amount that was set up for that approximately? Three point two something, right?
Three point two is what is still remaining to be funded on Makerspace.
Yeah, three point, three million, two hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars.
Yes, sir.
So that's space for artists and, and, and other things that may be funded by some money that comes in from the state or, or otherwise. But now we're talking about a community that, we were talking 250. So really, if we took the 250 from this Makerspace piece, then you got the 250 without putting any more stress on the general fund. Is that correct?
So what we, if you're talking about using ARPA for it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, can, can I go ahead and continue?
Yes.
Okay, um, yes, um, so I would like to get a consensus from council to at least appropriate. You said it costs twenty million, um, Mr. Gibson, or about?
It was included at twenty-one, I think was the last number I heard.
And that is a low figure. That's a low figure.
They don't, they don't know what it is.
Yeah, but, but again, your point is.
Just the, just appropriated, just in case they agree to work with the, um, I'll say five million.
Consensus by council to appropriate?
And can I interject with a little bit of information that will bring you below your 12%?
No, we, we understand.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, but aren't we jumping?
Well, yeah, we are, we are, but we just need to put that, put that to bed, so we'll, we'll.
Never did finish the appropriation.
Yeah, because tonight I thought we were reviewing the parking lot items that we have agreed upon were parking lot items, so.
I thought we, I thought it was mentioned that we can add. Did we not say we can add to the list? Add and take away? That's what I thought it was mentioned at the beginning.
No, I thought they said that some, uh, some, there was a request that came in that requires some collaboration of some other agencies or something.
Well, yeah, with that email that I sent earlier, that was regarding, and I, maybe that can be used with the ARPA as far as.
This is what we'll do, Councilmember Banks. Let's, let's finish the list that we have, and then if there's a consensus to do anything different, then we'll, we'll take that at the end.
Okay, but before we go, was that not mentioned that we can add or take away from the list that's already up there?
The council can do whatever.
The council, okay.
Yes, ma'am, council can do whatever.
Council can do whatever they wanna do on that.
Absolutely, you can direct me to add, take away.
No, I just wanna make sure that that was mench, it was mentioned.
Yes, ma'am, and, um.
Okay, how many more items do we have on the parking lot then?
We have one, two, three, four.
So we were on Bonny Doon. What was the, the ultimate outcome of the 250 set aside for Bonny Doon improvements? Uh, show of hands of support for that?
For general fund funding.
I'm, right, I thought we were having a discussion with what I was.
Well, we were on a parking lot issue about Bonny Doon, and then I thought you had a question about Bonny Doon, but you were taking it to the Aquatic Center.
No, I thought he was finished because nobody said nothing else, so that was.
No, we, we're going down those lists, and as we get to each item, if there's consensus for it to stay, it stays. If it goes, it goes, and I was gonna come back to you for it.
Well, I didn't understand how it got to me if we were, but go, go ahead.
Well, because you had a question, I didn't know what it was pertaining to.
When you finish, I, okay.
All right, so, uh, council pertains to Bonny Doon, is there consensus to, uh, to set aside appropriation for Bonny Doon improvements, 250?
Of general fund funding.
Yeah, general fund. Or general fund or qualif, or other source, you gotta leave that open. So if there's other funding, correct? I know you, you have, ARPA has restrictions. I know you can't.
So if I'm bringing an appropriation to you, I have to identify the funding source in the ordinance.
Okay, so how did you do that when you, uh, did one of those items that said ARPA funds or state funds? You left some discretion in there. How did you do that?
So that's included in the CIP-TIP. Now, I can add that to the CIP, infrastructure initiatives in Bonny Doon, and put ARPA funding or other funding as identified.
Yeah, because you've got several CIP items in it.
If that, that way we're not restricting any general fund fund balance.
Right.
But we'll just add that.
It's just adding the item.
So that it doesn't get lost and it is included.
So it's there but not funded with the source.
It is there but not funded with general fund funds, but will be pursued using other funding methods. So if you'll make that note, you're get.
So it's unfunded, so it really didn't require anything for the budget adoption.
No, sir, it, it will. Y'all are amending the CIP and TIP by adding it. And I think that's the question, if you add it, and then you have to decide where you wanna pay for it. So it's, it's, it is, if you put it on the list, then that means we're gonna, it's something that we're gonna work toward. It may just not be funded through the general fund.
Oh, that, that is the key. So it's a positive decision if that is something that council has an interest to do. So that is the question that, on the floor now, is there an interest to add this to the CIP without the specifics of encumbering the money from the general fund, but for staff to track that as a, as a future project? Show of hands. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm, so if this is the mindset that I'm in, from my understanding, we have outlined the Bonny Doon as a high priority item within our, our housing efforts, correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah. Mr. Colley's shaking his head, yes.
Yes, I, I, okay. So with that, when we start to, I guess, enact on these projects, and Bonny Doon, from my understanding, is off of, is within a corridor. Is that also correct? Yeah, okay, so our, our corridors are getting more money. Um, we are adding more money to, uh, blight removal, and, uh, we, we've highlighted that in our priority for housing. So I'm trying to, trying to follow here. Couldn't we just pull from the allocations that we have already made versus making a whole separate allocation? Because I could be asking for the same thing for B Street, but I'm relying that we will do the same thing for the money that we're putting back into these pots, then rather creating a separate allocation.
So, so the housing that Chris presented in the plan showed this is one of the seven areas or six areas that we want something to happen, but it, there is no specific allocation to pull from until there's a specific project for housing. But housing is just one microcosm of redeveloping and changing a community. You have housing, businesses, infrastructure, beautification, support, job creation. So the appropriation for improvement of the area doesn't necessarily say that you're taking one thing from another because that part of money is different and has different restrictions than, than this part.
Well, that's why I pointed out the, the corridors as well, because some of those things you wrapped up in the corridor, I mean, and that can also be pulled from the corridor funding.
If you're considering Bragg Boulevard, but I don't, I don't know of any funding that's there for Bragg Boulevard coming from our end. What, what are you speaking of specifically for the corridor?
Corridor, we, we do beautification, we do, like, it's, it's the corridor.
We have a corridor improvement, uh, committee, but it, there's no allocation for anything over in Bonny Doon.
But it's off of a corridor, so anything attached to our corridor, we can say, hey, use this funding for that.
But you have to have the funding set aside. That's what we're trying to do.
But that's what we did in the budget already. We added more money to.
I don't see anything for Bragg Boulevard corridor improvement.
No, we added more money to our corridors, corridors, which means.
Ms. Manager, can you clarify what she's talking about? Because I don't see it in the CIP.
Well, I, I think, Mayor, um, I think that where you were was trying to see if there was consensus to make this a priority area. Um, if there's consensus for that, then we would, of course, and it, and it was not specific to the, um, general fund, use of general fund fund balance, but other sources, we would come back and look at ARPA. We would look at state grants, we would look at the corridor funding and all that. But the first one is really, yes, is to make sure that it is the consensus of council. This is an area that you want us to focus on in the upcoming year, um, with a, a goal of finding two hundred fifty thousand dollars of, of improvements, um, from some source other than general fund fund balance, which is, yes.
All right, so council, is there consensus to put that on here? It is remaining unfunded, but it would be an amendment to the wording that's in the CIP so that staff can track it. Show of hands, those in support? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Go, go, I think, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So one of the, the question that I had is initially when we started talking about the Bonny Doon area, we talked about it as infrastructure. Then it changed to beautification. So I just want on the record that I did ask for money for beautification and beautification for signs and the neighborhoods and things like that, and that was kind of pushed back to say, you know, we'll add more money as needed because certain areas didn't qualify for grant funding to be able to get it done. So we came back and said, um, as it, uh, we run out of money, then we'll come back and, you know, look at adding money to the fund to, to be able to do that. But then yet, we're going to allot, not that I disagree with it, but then we're going to allot for improvements for one area when we have several areas that are still looking to add beautification.
And, and I do remember, the sign program has certain specifics, like a subdivision, right? Bonny Doon is an area more so than just one subdivision. You have this part and that part. It's a, it's more of a radius of subdivisions. So I don't know if one was directly tied to another. I, I support the sign beautification. Uh, and so I, what I heard you say, just to make sure I'm, I understood it right, was that you funded it at the level that you funded it previously or the recommended level, and if you're saying if that exceeds the amount of requests, I mean, if the amount of requests exceed the money, then you'll come back and add more money?
Yes, sir. That's a correct understanding of, of what was communicated in the slides.
Was that the way you got that?
We had not, on the parking lot.
Because I thought we approved it just saying that we will start with the amount until it was gone and reappropriate more, or were you?
But we already had projects that were waiting that we didn't have money funded to be.
Was it not enough funding?
It was not enough funding.
We exhausted everything in the current fiscal year, FY twenty-two. And so as people have continued to come and request that funding, we have said we will have new funding effective July one.
But the new funding that you're saying July one, is it the same level as it was July one of last year?
Yes, sir.
So why would we not increase that just to?
That is at council's discretion to tell us, and we have not gotten.
How much was that amount?
That amount was seventy-five thousand, wasn't it?
It's twenty thousand dollars.
It's twenty thousand now.
It's twenty thousand.
But it was twenty, it was seventy-five thousand on, on the la, last budget.
It was a couple of, um, um, distinctions here. Um, Chris, how much do you have available in your budget, um, that is income-based? You can just yell it out.
His, it has restrictions on it.
His has restrictions, and council then decided that you want to make it available for using general fund for less restrictions. And so the commitment that we have on the board in the parking lot, and if this doesn't work for council, of course, as you said, you have the choice to do something different, is that when we run out of that twenty thousand dollars, we will come back to you and say, we've run out of the twenty thousand dollars, can we get more money? Um, it, or you could say, put thirty thousand or forty thousand in, but, and when we run out of the thirty or forty thousand that you may wish to put in, we would still make the commitment that we would come back to you. One of the things that I'm, I'm trying really hard to help do here, and it's not to say no, because it's not my decisions, where council gives us ultimate policy direction, but the more things you add in the parking lot and take away from the three and a half million dollars, and again, you're not doing a lot of it, then it, it restricts us when something does come up. Forgot to come back and say I may need to go below the 12%. We're still gonna come back to you. But when we look at the fifteen dollars an hour for the seasonal workers, that is four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in recurring money. I'm not saying that it's not important, not saying it's not important. Y'all have made that decision. But that is now money that is recurring, that does not allow me to pay or add the concierge program that you talked about, might be a full time. So I've gotta find, if this is gonna be a recurring program, I've gotta find recurring money for it. It doesn't help us with some of the security issues we talked about. Um, so what I'm trying to do is to say, this is where y'all, the rubber meets the road, but when you add things, it's also restricting your flexibility without going below your 12% goal later. Um, but, and, and we also, just to say, and to just mayor as well, this is, um, this is not unusual. This is not unusual. What has happened over the last year, because we had COVID and we were meeting over at the Transit Center, and because of the delayed election and everything else, we have not had a traditional, um, city council retreat, well, like the two or three day retreats to be used to have in the past. And so what we've been operating on is trying to use the existing strategic plan, existing CIP, and trying to find uses for these ARPA dollars. And so, um, some of the new initiatives that are coming forward now, some of the new ideas are just that, that normally we would have covered in February if we had had your retreat, too. But, um, again, this is the time for us to make, um, make it happen so that we can get a hopeful budget ordinance ready for you for Monday for you to consider.
All right, um, so council, as a relate, have we finished with those before we go to those remaining questions uh, that Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and Kinson had? Any more items on the parking lot we haven't discussed?
Yes, sir. So we're not adding any more money for homelessness and affordable housing right now because.
Because it's in the ARPA.
It is in the ARPA, as, um, Mr. Colley talked to you about on Monday. The concierge program, what is your pleasure with that?
Well, council, I would just hope that we know fifteen thousand dollars and the, the model that they use to try to create, um, a job for someone that was in a bad situation may not be providing the level of service and safety and security that the intent of a downtown ambassador was explained originally. So I would hope that we would, you know, at least add enough to that uh, that, that a, a real position could be, uh, reviewed, or either whether that's, um, working in partnership with Cool Springs or, or one of the other downtown agencies, or whether that's adding an extra foot patrol, something. But we have to do something because that environment is not good for, uh, for our downtown community. So, uh, you know, council, you know, fifteen thousand is what it, what it was the last time. Uh, I know you can't hire anybody for that kind of money. Uh, so, Mr. Manager, what should recommend, I mean, you know, what does it take based on the conversation council's saying and the concerns?
Well, one of the things that we did do is we've added a homeless coordinator in the police department. We've added, um, uh, uh, one, I think in Chris's shop, um, um, and we have other things which are ongoing. We are to the point where, um, if we were gonna add a position, this is not, I would ask y'all to, um, leave the funding as is and let's come back to you in November, or I mean, August or something with a proposal for what would work. Um, we have, um, one of the things that you and I've talked about is the need for a kind of concierge to help us with our development services arena when we open up the first floor.
I'm trying to stay focused on downtown, right?
I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but.
But that is downtown, so.
Well.
I, I hear you, Mayor, but I'm just really reluctant to say how much.
The issue is, we have a bad environment down here. We have people who are using the bathroom, they're, they're being very rude, they're accosting people as they come in and out of these businesses. Any of these downtown merchants can tell you the problems that they have with folks down there. And fifteen thousand dollars is not going to get it. I mean, so if there is a priority to do anything, I mean, we're spending, I think you have in this budget seventy-five, accelerating five years' worth of, uh, street scape, which are brick pavers down here. We're putting three hundred thousand dollars in brick pavers, but we don't have fifteen thousand to keep the community safe. Come on. I mean, that, this is, it, it seems that we're finding uses of money when, when we can. So can positions be hired? Uh, I know you can't do it out of one-time money, but can you do piloted positions?
We can, and that's what I was just getting ready to say. In the CBTD fund, um, we could use fund balance for fifty thousand dollars. We're projecting to have at least fifty thousand dollars of fund balance in that fund at the end of this FY twenty-three. So we could go ahead and reserve that fifty thousand dollars and for a pilot program and flesh that out, um, and see where.
And that's the MSD tax?
Yes, sir.
Now, Ken, y'all do understand that, that's an extra tax that businesses are paying for extra amenities and services, ten percent, I think. And we've had growth downtown, and that fund itself has a fifty thousand dollar fund balance, you're saying.
It has a little more than the fifty thousand dollar fund balance.
All right.
Um, and we could reserve that, and that would not impact your general fund fund balance at this time.
So council, is that a consideration that can be given? All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and then here.
Thank you. So currently, we already have two, and they're on foot walking downtown, police officers. Police officers. Officers.
Sworn officers.
Okay, sworn officers. Downtown is only so big. I think if we were to put more money towards it, it would, we would need an actual officer because someone would have to have some type of, um, experience with how to interact with, um, with anybody they come in contact with, any. with how to interact with, with anybody they come in contact with. And me personally, I don't even think no one would take someone serious without a gun on their hip. If it's not an officer, I don't think they would take them serious. That's just my thoughts on that.
Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. Ms. Olivera, and for clarification for me, years ago, when the, the downtown folk wanted the, I think it was the, the additional ten cent tax added, that's been many, many years ago. Do they have the authority to use that as they desire?
No, sir.
Or am I, okay, because I'm hearing, I heard what you were saying, and I was saying, well, I thought that the whole purpose of them saying, because that's only for the downtown.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That, that particular tax they requested. So, they still, it still runs through us how it's going to be used?
Yes, sir. It is at the discretion of council.
It can come with recommendations from them.
Yes, sir. It is at the discretion of council, just like all of our adware and tax dollars are. That is no different.
Thank you, Mayor.
Will this, or can this position be qualified under the ARP funding? And I know this is like, it would be an ongoing salary. Can we find money in the ARP, city manager, that might qualify for that type of position, given the increase of homelessness and being the impact of COVID in the homeless community, that you find more people walking downtown, whatever like that? Is there a possibility that we can qualify that?
I'm not sure. It depends on what types of duties and support they're providing, I think. As, as I hear the mayor, we're talking about a, a traditional concierge program that would be giving directions, calling things in if they see something, walking around in the downtown. And it, but, but it not, would not only be to help with homelessness issues, but mental health, if someone was having a mental health episode, or there was a security issue. So, I'm not sure, but we'd be happy to do some research on that to see if there would be the possibility for us to use that. As, as, I think Mrs. Olivera was talking about, the, if it's, if it's a pilot program, we can come back with what that looks like. But as we had cast the concierge program, it really had kind of two pieces to it. One was to actually help someone who had recently experienced homelessness, but also that they then could be a, a role model or a coach of sorts to help people who were downtown experiencing homelessness, to be able to say, look, I've, I've been, I've been where you are, let me help you get connected to the services. That's not quite what I think the mayor's talking about at the moment. He's talking about something a little bit more. And so, again, we'd be happy to come back with some concepts for you, and to check to see whether or not ARPA dollars could be used for it. But I think in the broader sense, that may not be something that right now would qualify, because it does sound like it is more like a downtown docent program of sorts, you know. But we'll be happy to take a look, happy to take a look at that.
Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin?
I'm, I, I think I'm somewhat confused. Okay, are we talking about two different things? Are we saying, because from my understanding, it was, we were needing more officers or concierge to basically, because of the homeless issues in the downtown area. Am I hearing that right? So, just for homeless, not for security?
My understanding of it is that it is a larger issue, where we would like an incre- an increased presence in our downtown area of a person who is there to direct people and to address any people who are homeless, who are kind of in, in the middle of an episode, that may need services provided in the moment.
Because I was going to say, not to cut you off, because I was going to say, if we were thinking about doing something like that, I would recommend that we utilize that person for more than one thing. Like, when you think a concierge can be, you know, for tourism, if a person looking for a certain shop in the area, they can kind of direct them in that area, along with, along with providing resources. So, a combination of not just.
Well, the, the two, the two things on that, one is, the proposed source was coming from an extra tax that's paid by just the, these businesses here for extra stuff that's got to benefit just them, you know. And so, it, it was not like a general fund where you could say, hey, you work part-time to work in inspections while you also patrol downtown and, and work with, you know, some other Parks and Rec or whatever. So, I think if, if source of funds is coming out of MSD, it's got to be something that enhances the services in that area of the people who pay that tax, because everybody didn't pay that extra tax. So, just wanted to keep that, keep that in mind.
That is correct. The, the area that the person would concentrate on would be the downtown area. But if it's your pleasure, we can reserve fifty thousand dollars or, you know, whatever amount you say.
I just think fifteen is a joke. I mean, honestly, but.
And, and I know that Councilmember Ingram was going to dust off that proposal and send it to staff, so that we could kind of look at it and make sure that it's meeting the interests of the council now.
So, council, this really wouldn't be a, a budgetary impact on the general fund. It would be using the, the fund from the tax.
That's from the CBTD tax. It would, it would be an impact to the CBTD, but not to your general fund.
And if I can add to, to answer, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin's concern, the person that was hired, they did do that. They did show individuals where to go if they were looking for, you know, a certain shop, helped somebody out with the parking meter. So, they did do tho- those types of tasks.
All right. So, what you need, councilors, their consensus to use the MSD's taxes on dollars to add to that, to, okay.
And fifty thousand dollars is a good amount to say.
Whatever the fund balance is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I won't take all of it, because then if something else comes up, but it, can we say fifty thousand? Is that a good place to start?
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
And then the community, community beautification is our last item from the parking lot. So, as I said before, it's currently.
Is that what Councilmember, uh, Kinston was talking about?
That is what Councilmember Kinston was talking about. That is, I, the, one thing she added to our parking lot. So, it's currently funded at twenty thousand dollars a year, and we can use fund balance to fund that.
So, you, you're only showing twenty thousand, but the other money was coming out of, uh, community development, which had restrictions as to the, the income level of the neighborhood.
Correct. There are grant funds.
So, I think we need to double it.
Available for some neighborhoods, and that was why council.
How much was requested that didn't get funded? That'll give us an idea about how much you need, right?
Yes, sir. I, I think, I know what Councilmember Kinston's talking about, but to be clear, we have not denied or postponed funding a single sign this year. Yeah, I mean, we, we've used some tree fund funds to try to close the gap. We have one right now that just got submitted to us last week. So, by the time it gets processed, it'll be the new fiscal year. We've, we have not said, we don't have money for you.
Okay, Southgate.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Southgate.
Southgate.
So, before I go to Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Kinston, he's saying that they still have money. So, why are projects saying they, they were told they couldn't get any more projects until next fiscal year?
So, Councilmember Kinston has one individual that we'd be happy to talk about with her offline.
Oh, okay, okay. So, that's a specific.
But yes, if, if anybody on council has someone you've heard that we've denied funding to, that is, that is not accurate. And so, bring it back to us.
We can talk about that one offline. Mayor, I think the other part of it is, in the community, a lot of neighborhoods that I've talked through, talked to through Neighborhood Watch, they're not even familiar with the program unless you bring it up and talk about it. So, there's a lot of neighborhoods, you know, that do need new signage, that weren't aware of it. So, the education is the part of the beautification. But once it starts getting that ball rolling, we need the money available to be able to fund those for them. But the other issue I'll, I'll talk about offline. I'm not going to open that up.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Jones, and then here and Banks McGlaughlin after that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what, what, what's pending now, when the budget hits on July first, will that almost already be exhausted as soon as it hits, based on what's waiting down the pipeline?
So, our, our average sign is, is about three grand, maybe four, depending. We, we'll have about five signs that we can do next fiscal year. So, right now, we've got one that's going to hit early in July, and then we'll have four more. I, I do want to, if I take a little bit of liberty with this, that, that council approved three positions for neighborhood engagement for us to get out in the community a lot more, to do exactly what Councilmember Kinston's talking about, to advertise these programs. We also, in our action plan, allocated three hundred thousand dollars for neighborhood resources from federal resources. Now, that goes in our qualified census tracts. All six of your redevelopment areas are in qualified census tracts. So, the funding you're considering tonight is outside of your redevelopment areas. And just to kind of put that in place, yes, there are restrictions. The restriction is that these are low-income areas that we have already identified as redevelopment areas.
Okay. So, but based on what's, what we're waiting on to get funded now, again, when that money hits on the first, will it already be exhausted? And the, and the reason I'm asking, because if we're considering how much money to allocate toward, how much additional money we're considering, I just want to know if we're going in on July first, what's, what you already have in your queue per se, is that already going to be exhausted based on just the current funding that's going to hit on July first?
We have one project that is going to hit in July for three or four grand. So, that will take, you know, one sign out of a potential of five signs that we fund annually.
Thank you.
So, just to repeat that now, so, all of the programs are targeted to, to low-income targeted areas? So, if there's citizens that live in an area that's not low-income targeted, and they need a neighborhood sign, do they not qualify?
That's what your general fund allocation is for, is to do that outside of.
The twenty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Which will pay for three and a half signs? No, six signs?
Yeah, about six. Yeah, five or six, depending. Sometimes they're double-sided signs, it's a whole thing, yeah.
Yeah. So, so, Councilmember here and then Banks McGlaughlin, then maybe propose just, I would propose adding thirty thousand to it.
Yeah, I, I, I do too, Mayor. I, I, I support that figure one hundred percent. I'm, I'm not sure where I was getting the seventy-five thousand, because I have really been promoting that seventy-five thousand as a part of the community signs.
Councilmember here, you're, you're, you're correct, but it gets, it gets complicated in specifics.
Yeah, okay.
Council allocated some tree fund money towards the sign program. You allocated general fund dollars, and then the remainder, thirty or so thousand dollars, was in grant funds. We now have three hundred thousand dollars in grant funds.
Yeah, I, I knew that I had read the figure, and it had been announced to me, because I've been going all over the district. But one of the things that, and I'm not telling council members anything as far as networking or marketing this, but every time we go into an area of things that, that are very, very helpful, which is so many items, we have to make sure that we are responsible for making our communities aware. My communities know about micro grants. My communities know about the money that's used for community signs, and on and on and on, and speed homes, and three-way stops. I mean, they don't have to ask the questions, because when I go in there, I got a list, and I'm, I'm banging it out at them. So, that, that's just a part of what we also have to help and let it be aware of.
All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Um, thank you. That was a good point, but I do want to just add to that, because, you know, me and you share the same area, so we both do the same thing. But a lot, it's a handful of people who don't even attend Community Watch meetings. So, we still have to find a way to market and let, let our citizens know. I do have a question with the, it might be a little bit off the topic, but I'm asking because we're in budget and adding stuff to the, to the chart. Now, I know I noticed on a few slides before, it mentioned that we're not funded for this, the city spirit. Do, we know when they're supposed to come in and present their recommendations?
We have received about one and a half million dollars from the state that could be used for, for sites and the Market House repurposing is the other. I don't see Emil here or Jay at the moment, but I think they are slated to come back in August or early September with the reconnaissance from their, um, um, community meetings that they've had. But I think it's August, I don't think it's earlier than August.
And you said, that's how much money?
Well, we've received, I think, one and a half million dollars for the Market House and other historic sites. And it was a list. But if we're talking about some of the grander designs that were discussed for the Market House, we may not have enough money to implement all of those. But we'll know more when they come back with the list.
Which will be after?
Yes, ma'am. And if that were to be the case, we would probably add the Market House to the CIP, and you would then program certain money to go toward it every year until you had it like you wanted it.
Yeah. Well, well, I would like to, well, I recommend that, because I know it's been several community events that they're, they've been attending, and it was put out there so the residents can have an input. And our staff, they have done the work. So, if we have funding there, I think we need to put the fund in there. So, once they come back with a recommendation, we can move forward with it, while the money is here. And then my second question with, but this probably ties into the ARPA funding, as far as the Day Resource Center.
Yes, ma'am.
How much money do we have set aside there as far as, I know we put out a RFP. Have you, we had, got any response with that? And what role are, what role is the city going to play? And I'm asking for funding purposes, because if we're, once it's complete, and we spent tho-, you know, those fundings to renovate it and everything, how much funds are we going to, you know, be able to occupy, or if we're paying someone to come in? Have we had those conversations?
I'm not going to step on Chris's toes, but I'll start the conversation off. On your agenda for Monday, in addition to my budget appropriation, is a separate appropriation to add another million dollars from Incor for that project. And that CCAM does indicate that we're planning to use a million dollars, another million dollars of ARPA funding for it. So, the appropriation on Monday's agenda will bring the project budget to five point nine nine million. And then, once you approve the ARPA funding for it, it'll be six point nine nine million. And there is a contract award in, as, as part of that also for the construction.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we do have funding as far as with the ARPA fund to be able to use, instead of using our general, our general dollars.
Yes, ma'am. We have earmarked a million dollars for that.
Thank you.
All right, councilors, their consensus to make that amount from twenty thousand to fifty thousand for community and sign improvements for areas throughout the city that are?
Add thirty thousand.
Not as restricted as the low-income requirements, all right?
Okay, all right.
All right, now, that's the last item on there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Before I go to Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, it was one thing I wanted to ask about that I did not see. How much was the pro-, uh, set aside this year for trash pickup? Do you recall in, in, in the proposed budget for, for Michael's Cruise? Did we fund the full four cruise? I know before we tapered it off and we put it back on, but our trash problem is getting better. But I want to make sure we're not starting and stopping resources throughout the year, because there's times where it gets real heavy. They work hard to get it caught back up, the litter, litter is what I mean.
Right, the right-of-way cruise. So, my understanding is that they're funded at the same level that they were for FY twenty-two.
But there was some, does, is that the, the elevated amount of cruise, Mr. Manager, or is that at the, okay, all right.
Um, some of the issues to, um, the amount of stuff that people are throwing out of the cars, and it's just.
I, I still haven't seen any litter signs. I know we talked about it a million times, but.
Well, it's, we, we have installed some in the neighborhoods, but the, um.
We need them on the corridors, isn't it, the stop signs where, where they're picking up these trash. You wouldn't know if you, because you don't see the sign.
Well, that's, I, you know, it's some, well, we can come back with that information about what the fines are. I don't know right off top.
We want this thing adopted, so how much are signs?
Well, not about the signs, I'm about the fees. I think, fine, that was the question.
The fees are a thousand dollars, five hundred dollars and a thousand, or something like that. But we need to warn and educate. So, I thought, I know the council asks for signs probably on three different occasions. Do we know the status of, uh, signs? If there ain't much in, in money in the budget for signs, for litter?
Not specifically that is coming to my mind. And Mr. Gibson is shaking his head, no.
There is, um, there was a criteria that was used to try to identify where this no littering signs would be beneficial. And if you, if just, if you think about, let's say, a country club where people are doing fifty and fifty-five, but until Monday, when the speed limit will be lowered, where the actions y'all are going to take. And then also realizing that, you know, multi-lane highways, it's just, it fades into the background. So, some of the things that, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the education, I just don't know that the signs are necessarily being.
The problem I have, I know we've tried all the alternative methods of partnering with Sustainable Sandhills and, and doing the, the Friday pickup, whatever that thing was. But I'm talking about signs, we have signs out the road to tell you how fast doing the the Friday pickup, whatever that thing was, but I'm talking about signs. We have signs out the road to tell you how fast to go, to tell you to turn right or turn left, so signs work. So why, what's the reluctance in putting signs?
Well, they work for folks who don't want to be inclined to throw out litter. That's the thing.
I mean, if somebody sees and passes a sign, but 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 council director was to do is.
And we are, and we have, we we have um, we've done award-winning work as it relates to litter abatement, and particularly with our marketing efforts.
I'm sticking to the signs.
But I hear you about signs, I hear you about signs, and we will come back with some ideas about.
Well, I would like specifically to know how many signs have been placed and where, because that's something we've, we've at least talked about this three times. So if it's a budget issue, I think now's the time to.
I've personally seen more litter signs. I've also spotted some litter cameras too, but I'm just saying, I've personally have spotted more signs.
I I haven't, I haven't seen any, but I, you know, maybe I've overlooked it, but.
Now, I apologize. In our solid waste um, fund, there may be some money identified for that. I'm not saying that there is or there isn't. It's, I just cannot off the top of my head right now speak to that. I apologize.
All right, so finally, council, go to council member Banks McLaughlin. She had an ask of council. Um, good?
Um, no, our um, our wait is is more important, um, things ahead versus um, although I support the Aquatic Center, but I'd rather wait to have a conversation with the county and the city. Um, but I would like to see at least um, a million dollars put towards the um, Day Resource Center.
Yeah, they got six already, huh? All right, so is that an ask before we ask for all hearts and minds to be clear?
That's an ask.
Okay, is there support for that? I know there's already.
Because let me. Six points. But how, you said, is how much there currently right now, and with the?
Right this moment, it is four point nine nine. We have received an award from Incor for an additional million dollars that we're bringing to you on Monday night to appropriate.
Okay.
And it would be five point nine nine at that point. There is an additional million dollars that we are earmarking in the ARPA funds that we're going to bring back.
Okay, maybe I misheard that, okay.
And then it'll be six point nine nine million dollars.
Okay, okay, Day Resource.
All right, so council, fall hearts upon the cliff.
But wait, then, mayor, I'm so, wait a minute before we get excited. But again, we don't have funding for the market house. Is that correct?
No, we do. It it has one point five million that the state gave for repurposing, waiting on that.
Just one point, but we don't know roughly about how much that's going to happen yet.
We don't know what it is, because we haven't gotten that far yet.
And that should be what, the end, this month, next month?
I don't know, but uh, maybe I'll let you talk offline to the manager on that, but if if we don't have anything else on parking lot and budget, um, can we get a motion to adjourn? All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you all so much. This.